Patricia.
We are recording.
Great. All right. Welcome, everybody. Hello, Jim, John, Julie, Melanie, commissioners, presenters. I'm now calling the meeting of April 15th, 2020 to order. Melanie, can you do the roll call?
Commissioner Brennan. Commissioner Chen Corley.
Present.
Commissioner Lorenz. You're unmute yourself, Ed.
Here.
Commissioner Ryering.
Present.
Commissioner Matouche.
Present.
Great. Before we go to public comment, I want to again thank our staff for their continued work and the great job that they're doing in these extraordinary times to keep the district functioning and moving forward. We have more good news this week that shelter in place is working and our county is not overwhelmed in terms of hospital beds and ventilators. That said, we may not reach a peak in COVID-19 cases until mid or late May. So it does look as if our restricted movements and gatherings will not be ending right away and will need to continue to protect each other and use video conference procedure for our commission meetings. We are committed to following proper parliamentary procedures during our meetings and in order to make sure that every commissioner is heard and that their comments can be recorded on each agenda item, I will poll each commissioner in random order for each matter. And everyone will have a second opportunity to speak after everyone has spoken once. Individuals must seek recognition from the chair before speaking, so please remember to go through the chair. That helps Melanie to take good notes. Thank you. And Liski, I think you have some housekeeping.
Sure do. Thanks, Nancy. So as a reminder, we are live streaming to Facebook, but will not be monitoring questions there. So if you do have questions or comments, please use the Zoom app. There are three ways to comment in Zoom. You can click on the participant button at the bottom of your screen and an icon to raise hand should appear. If it does not appear, you can click on the three dots to the right and raise hand should appear there. You can also type your question in the chat or raise hand by dialing star nine from your phone if you joined us by phone today. And with that, I will hand it back over to President Ryering.
Thanks so much, Lizzie. We'll start with public comment and questions. I don't see any members of the public here right now. Does anybody else?
You're not.
Okay.
Looks like a couple of hands just raised, actually.
President Ryering, I would like to recognize that Commissioner Brennan has joined us.
Okay, thank you. Welcome, Sabrina. Oh, yes, I see. Okay, now my participants are showing up. TJ Guothea, you have a question. Please go ahead.
Thank you very much. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good. Thank you for holding the meeting and for making it available to everyone public. I'm here in particular because of the RCD topic on your agenda later, but I just wanted to make a comment at the beginning that I support what you're doing and trying to be available and accessible to everyone during this time. So thank you.
Thank you so much. We have another member of the public, Barry Day. Would you like to make a comment? Barry, can you hear us?
Barry, unmute your mic or try star six.
Oh, yeah, Barry, your mic is muted. There you go.
Me now? Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, the unmute came up. Thank you. I'm furthering from last meeting regarding dock sales. Okay, so I've kept pushing ahead on that. One, we can organize a farmer's market up there. I've sort of got farmer's market people involved that can deal with all the permits, et cetera, there. At the moment, there's two venues possible. There's one across the road there. But a planning, you know, a job permit with a planning department may blow us out till the end of May, so I'd like to deal with use with that and, you know, just put it on the table there. If we could use the car park up the top, that's that's one. And two, that's going to cost us all money, obviously, $1,000 set up and each time we go in there. And obviously, if it's a farmer's market, the local guys would be involved too with their vegetables and stuff. So that's that's one. The other one with the fish sales is the obvious one, which is each ramp, someone patrols it and one person to each boat and one person up the ramp. It'd be much like the shopping centers and takeaway restaurants. That's two thoughts I got there.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your comments. Dan Hagerty, welcome to the conversation. Would you like to make a public comment at this time? And I do see that your mic is muted. There we go.
Yes, thank you, commissioners. My concern is with the the big sign by the boat out there at the intersection saying that the harbor's closed. I have seen also that the, well, the concern is with the commercial, you know, the restaurant. I understand Catch Joanna is closed, but Princeton Seafood is still open. And I just wanted to say that, in my opinion, you know, it kind of gives a little bit of a conflicting message. And I understand where in the need and all that. But I do think that it's it's a little it's a little loud at the front door and I'm certain that it is affecting the Princeton Seafood and the, you know, the, I guess that's the only business that's open there. So I just wanted to make that comment. I don't know if anything can be done, but I don't think I'm probably the first person to make this comment. So I just wanted to put it up there and, you know, see if something can be done about it to have, you know, the closed sign maybe a little smaller and the and the open for business for, you know, your tenant, a little louder. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Dan. Any other comments? Looks like we don't have any hands raised, so we'll move on to commissioner comments. Virginia, do you have any comments?
No, I don't. Not now. Thank you.
Commissioner Matouche.
I saw in today's daily journal, county officials are, the headline is county officials projecting a bleak financial forecast. I think from everything we've seen regarding this COVID-19, it's going to affect the Harbor District very difficultly as well. And that's going to impact some future decisions that we'll be making as we try and stay conservative and within the bounds of what we need to do to maintain the Harbor District, our tenants, lessees, residents, and everyone involved. So I've been down to the harbor a few times. It's eerily quiet and empty. But that's a sign of the times. I'm glad we're not seeing the crowds that could possibly, we don't want to see our fishermen get sick. We don't want to see our harbor staff get sick. The social distancing is working.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Lorenz, any comments?
Yes. I'd like to point out to everyone that the migratory bird season is upon us along with whales and other marine mammals. Fitzgerald Marine Reserve, I've been going with the biologists out counting marine mammals, specifically harbor seals, and they are being born as we speak. We, one day I counted 10, the next day we counted 20, and today I didn't go out, but the numbers are even higher. I know that they had some more birds. So it's important for folks in the harbor to follow the speed limit signs because we always see especially harbor seals, but also sea lions with propeller cuts and they they can't get away from speeding boats. So that's one. The other is that we have on our jetties and on our breakwaters pelicans that are are beginning to show up. This is Pillar Point Harbor is one of the largest stopover sites in the West Coast for pelican migration. And we now have birds on the jetties that are oyster catchers, pigeon guillemots, gulls, all nesting. And so they they need to be protected too, and that's mainly from speeding boats and also very important from the fishermen using their high intensity lamps at night. That's it.
Thank you. Commissioner Brennan.
Yeah, thanks. I just wanted to say that there is some really amazing crab coming in these days. And just this afternoon, we were fortunate to have two extremely large crab delivered to our doorstep by one of our local crab fishermen out of Pillar Point Harbor. And I don't know if you guys can see this, but that is what dinner looked like times two. So the crab were actually so big that we undercooked them and we had to steam them a few more minutes to finish the job. So very impressive and crab season's been extended this season because it had a late start. So if people are interested in buying crab, it's available and it's also available for delivery. I did hear Barry's comment and I wonder if he has checked in with Aaron, who operates the Half Moon Bay Farmer's Market as well as the Pacifica Farmer's Market because they do sell seafood from there. I don't know what their rules are on that, but I'm just curious if if any of our local fishermen have looked into potentially selling through the Pacifica and Half Moon Bay Farmer's Markets. Also wanted to mention that we're getting further updates from the governor on a daily basis regarding COVID-19. So if people aren't aware, they can tune in to his press conferences on a regular basis. Usually it's around noon and you can watch video online or you can listen to it on the radio. And he's been talking about how we're going to transition to getting back to work eventually. And so for anybody interested, they should definitely check that out. And I hope everybody is receiving their checks, their $1,200, their unemployment plus the 600 bucks a week or their business loans, whatever it is they've gone after to help get them through. And if anybody has questions about that sort of thing, needs links, happy to help. You can always reach me at sabrina@dfm.com. That's D as in digital, F as in fusion, M as in media.com. Thanks.
Thank you. Number three on the agenda is committee updates. Do we have any reports from any committees?
I had to relocate. I was getting interrupted signal. I had to get closer to my router. But the Finance Committee will have a report later on in the meeting.
Great, thank you.
Yes, so Nancy, I just want to piggyback on the Finance Committee. We did meet and I want to thank Julie for all the work that she did to really kind of give us a better picture of what the finances could look like under these circumstances. And as Tom said, there are agenda items on the agenda tonight that we need to be voting on or, you know, reviewing, including the first look at the budget. Thank you, Julie, for your work.
Great. Yes, thank you, Julie. I think those, that's probably the only committee that met in the last two weeks. So we'll move on to items on the consent calendar. Items one through four on the consent calendar, I'm going to pull item number two. The minutes from April 2nd. Are there any other items that any commissioner would like to see polled?
I'd like to poll bills and claims.
Okay. And we'll put both of those at the end of the agenda tonight.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar without the bills and claims and, oh, I basically items one and two, I believe, right?
Right, without items one and two.
Yes. So basically, items three and four on consent, I'll make a motion to approve.
Can you repeat what items three and four are? Just because it's hard to pull up the agenda.
So item three is the monthly capital projects update and number item four is the second quarter fiscal year 2020 investment report, which I know that Julie emailed to us as well.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Second on the question.
Roll call, Melanie.
Commissioner Brennan.
Aye.
Commissioner Chen Corley.
Aye.
Commissioner Lorenz.
Aye.
Commissioner Ryering.
Aye.
Commissioner Matouche.
Aye.
The first item on our discussion list tonight is Surfers Beach Pilot Project Update. John Moran will be making the presentation. John, you're muted. John? You have to unmute.
Star six, John. Or the mute button.
There you go. Is there a talk?
Recommendation. Yeah, this is, this is a staff recommendation to the board. The staff recommends the board receive an update presentation from consultants and consider a proposal for continued design and permitting assistance on the Surfers Beach Sand Replenishment Pilot Project and improve increase and increase in capital expenditures appropriations of $64,500 to be funded by available working capital. The goal of the Surfers Beach Restoration Pilot Project is to remove 75,000 cubic yards of sediment which was built up inside Pillar Point Harbor, inside the outer breakwater, and move it to Surfers Beach for beneficial reuse, then monitor its movement, validating a later larger project. In addition to addressing coastal erosion and public access issues at Surfers Beach, this project would also address the issues associated with the shoaling that has occurred inside the harbor since the outer breakwater was constructed. We've got District Consultant Brad Damit's here with us and he'll now give us a project update and answer any questions in addition to presenting a proposal for further design engineering monies that are needed for this project. Go ahead, Brad.
Thank you. Let me get myself set up here and I'm going to share the screen. And.
Nice background.
Thank you.
Right, that's great.
Is it the right orientation?
Yes.
Okay, I had to flip it. I wasn't sure. Okay, and is everybody seeing the presentation now?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Well, thank you and hi to all the harbor commissioners and district staff and everybody in this virtual audience, I guess. And it's been a while since you've heard from me and we've given you an update on the project. So, you know, since the last time, quite a bit has happened and I'm going to provide an update today about the project. Start off with a quick refresher on the history and background and then give you an update on the current status of the project, including some key accomplishments and also why things seem to be taking long and some of the challenges that we're now dealing with and addressing. I'll give you some information on the project budget and cost and what the next steps are to complete the project. We decided to to continue on the trajectory and also I'll provide some details on the project itself, including a quick look at some of the engineering plans. And the original intent, when this was on the agenda for the last meeting, was that Louis White and Bob Battaglio from ESA were going to join me in presenting some of the plans. And, you know, obviously, since we can't do that now, I'm hoping that in a future meeting they can provide updates and answer questions and go through all the technical details. And then at that time, I can also give you an update on some of the other happening since then to deal with eelgrass and everything. So to get started, you know, everybody, I think, is familiar with, obviously, Pillar Point Harbor, but a few things that we're going to be talking about here, this is the West Breakwater, Outer Breakwater and the East Outer Breakwater. See all this sand in here that has accumulated since the breakwaters were constructed, finished in 1961. And then this stretch of coast here is Surfers Beach. So that's what we're talking about for restoring. Project need and background, you know, John got into it a little bit and and I think everybody's quite familiar. But to break it down real quickly, after the breakwater was constructed in 1961, there is an immediate, almost immediate noticeable increase in erosion rates of the beach next to it. I mean, the 80s, it became a real bad problem and Caltrans and the county had to do some shoreline armoring with that revetment to protect the roads. And finally, in 2007, the community really got together, including a lot of surf, local surfers because of safety issues and beach access issues and kind of put a little bit of pressure on the Harbor District to see if they could do anything to address the issue and move forward with the project that could restore the beach with some sediment inside the harbor. Okay, so. And then after that, in the same year, 2007, the district approached the Army Corps of Engineers and the two entities got together and entered the community and the Army Corps proceeded in doing some studies. So what they found after really doing a lot of study and analysis, looking at potential alternatives, the Army Corps found two problems that are occurring due to the construction of the outer breakwaters. The first is that severe erosion that happened outside of Surfers Beach. And they found that between 1998 and 2012, rate was about 1.64 feet per year.
Brad, can I stop you for a second? We need to have the commissioners mute their computer.
Okay. Okay, so the other issue that they found was harbor sedimentation. And there's an obvious shoaling that's occurred inside the harbor due to the changing of the wave dynamics and sediment transport. So instead of ending up on the coast behind me, it ended up inside the harbor, causing some issues, potential issues with navigation and anchoring and that kind of thing. So, you know, since the Army Corps did the study, they determined that there's no federal interest, meaning that they're not going to pay for it and sponsor the project. So in lieu of that, the Harbor Commissioners back in 2015 decided to take it on as a pilot project scale as a Harbor District project. And since then, we've tried to acquire funding and we began with the project planning, which I'll get into. But real, very quickly, what is the project all about? It's an opportunistic beach nourishment project, taking up to 75,000 cubic yards that's trapped in the inside the outer breakwater of the harbor and placing it on Surfers Beach to restore the beach and address some of the erosion issues. We call opportunistic because there's a need for the Harbor District to maintain that that anchorage and navigation and that east basin of the harbor. And as it shoals in, that need's going to become more and more urgent. And it would be a win-win situation if you could take that clean beach quality sand that would have been on the beach anyway and move it to Surfers Beach. So number of benefits are expected, including protection of the highway and other infrastructure, improved access, recreation on the beach, beach habitat, and an alternative to coastal armory. So if nothing were to be done, the coast would continue erosion, eroding, and that stretch of riprap would continue to protect Highway One until, you know, ultimately, there's no beach there anymore. So a project planning process, which we began in 2017, when we got some grant funding to initiate this planning phase. And it includes a bunch of components, including stakeholder collaboration and outreach, design and engineering, environmental review, permitting, monitoring of the project, and then just overall project management. So we are aiming for, you know, there's obviously going to be some delays because of the issues I'm going to get into and also because of the COVID-19 situation, but we're still planning for a summer of 2021 construction date for the project. So what have we accomplished to date? Quite a bit of outreach and stakeholder collaboration. There's a lot of folks that are interested in this project from both agencies and just public organizations and stuff. So we've got a lot of requests to give presentations. In fact, Ed Lorenz and I were preparing to do a poster for a workshop that the county was going to hold in early March that got canceled at the latest last minute. But things like that, it was a coastal resilience workshop. So a lot of meetings with local jurisdictions and we had a technical advisory group with different agency representatives and subject experts and engineers and, you know, different kinds of experts, geologists, who are helping us with the, coming up with the project design. And of course, a whole lot of meetings with agencies, local jurisdictions. As far as design and engineering, we have made quite a few accomplishments there. We've received a lot of input from the agencies on the design itself, but we've also collaborated with the Army Corps and they've provided us with some computer modeling of different scenarios. I can talk about that in a few slides, how that's kind of affected the way that we plan the project. We put out RFP and contracted for engineering services. Again, that was ESA. Bob Battaglio and Louis White are leading that effort.
Excuse me, Brad. There's a lot of background noise that is very distracting. So I don't know who's not on mute, but I missed part of what you just said, Brad. I'm sorry. Is everyone on mute? I don't know what's going on. I don't know if anyone else is hearing that noise or if it's just me.
No, I hear it too, and it sounds like something brushing against somebody's microphone is really distracting. I was muted and.
Yeah, me too.
That could have been me. That could have been my paper here again. I'm sorry if that was, let me move it.
No, 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 it's not a problem. It's just it's very hard to actually hear what you're saying, Brad. I'm sorry for interrupting, but I just, I think this is such an important presentation. I just want, I don't want to miss any of it.
Yeah. Okay, sorry about that. My fault. And thanks for interrupting. So and please, if anybody has questions, interrupt. John, if I need to speed up, slow down, anything like that, just chime in and let me know. Okay, I'm sorry, just wanted to finish this. So we've just, as far as engineering goes, I'll get into that a little bit soon, but we've evaluated a whole list of potential design options that involved working with the sanctuary to see what they were willing to allow as well as other agencies. And we actually got to the point where we had some permitting level design plans. On the environmental review as well, we've done sediment sampling and analysis and eelgrass mapping, which affected the project as well, which I'll get into. And I just initiated eelgrass mitigation planning, again, something I'll talk about. And we've made some progress as well towards a SEQA documentation shaping up nicely. Permitting and agency consultation. We've done a lot of collaboration with the sanctuaries on this and they've been great supporters and they've actually been very helpful allowing us to come up with a project design that meets their regulatory needs, but also meets our project goals. We've had a whole lot of local jurisdiction meetings and agencies and permitting workshops and stuff like that. So very quickly, you know, just to show you, things were moving along. Last summer, we're aiming for doing project construction in spring of 2020 before we ran into some challenges. These are some of the initial plans that we were looking at. We'll come back to these in a little bit more detail in a bit. But I just wanted to put that up there so you can, for some context, which will make sense in a second. So the first thing that we had done that affected the project plans was sediment sampling and analysis. So if you go back here, you can see these were our proposed dredging areas to avoid where we knew there was eelgrass and also take care of some maintenance dredging needs of the. to avoid where we knew there was eelgrass and also take care of some maintenance dredging needs of the boat launch ramp. So after doing the sediment sampling, we determined that all around the perimeter here and the beach is really good, high-quality, beach-quality, perfect sand for the project. Even these, um, two samples right here were good. But some of the stuff in the center was too silty, too many fines, and it's not going to be usable for beach nourishment. So we have to kind of adjust the plans accordingly there. However, there's still plenty of really good quality sand in the harbor that we can access. That was completed in August of 2019. So the second thing, and it's probably the biggest stumbling block that we've run into. What I'm showing you now is the most recent harbor-wide eelgrass survey from last November. Uh, but the issue began in August, when we had a baseline eelgrass survey done for the project and discovered that due to all this shoaling, a pretty large bed of eelgrass has established itself right smack out in the middle of our dredging area. So again, we have to go back to the drawing board on that. What this means is that we either have to figure out a way to dredge around the eelgrass and not impact it, or we have to mitigate for that eelgrass and, you know, establish it somewhere else in the harbor that's more appropriate for eelgrass. So more on that in a second. Uh, one of the things that we spent a whole lot of time with the engineers on doing is looking at different scenarios where we could actually move forward with the project and completely avoid the eelgrass or maybe minimally impact it. And unfortunately, it turns out you can only get about 39,000 cubic yards, which isn't really enough to do even the pilot project, to avoiding it. And the other thing that we kind of determined in talking with the biologist is that the eelgrass is going to continue to expand. And it's going to make it harder and harder in the future to do maintenance dredging. It's going to be necessary. So at that time, we kind of got together with John Moran and others and discussed it in detail and decided to move forward with developing an eelgrass mitigation plan that would establish eelgrass in other parts of the harbor, say, like the West Basin, where anchoring and navigation isn't a key thing, and you don't need to do your maintenance dredging, rather than this side of the harbor where it will need to be dredged at some point.
Brad, can I ask a question?
Of course.
Back to that last slide. Uh, this is the first time I've seen such a very detailed rendering of the patches of eelgrass. I mean, I had an idea where they were, like, where you've got the arrows showing eelbed, eelgrass bed, TYP, extended potential eelgrass habitat, that area. But I didn't realize that it had started blooming or growing over near the launch ramp and closer to the shoreline and those, those places. Has this been like a real fast expansion of the eelgrass, or has this been a gradual thing?
I think it's been fairly fast. For example, those boat launch ramp ones were not there when we surveyed it in probably 2018 or early 2019 for the boat launch dredging. So that's one example. As well, a lot of these ones have expanded. It looks like there's more than there really is because of the way that they survey it and process the information. So there has to be like one strand of eelgrass within three meters, and then that's considered a bed. So even though it may not be a real dense eelgrass bed, the dark green just shows where there's eelgrass plants, you know, in some proximity to each other.
So my other... Oh, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
So the, and then the light green shows just eelgrass habitat that doesn't actually have eelgrass, but it's the kind of the buffer around it that they call habitat.
So you mentioned some sort of a future plan to relocate eelgrass into another part of the harbor. If we were to do that, would it, okay, two questions. Would it potentially have a beneficial impact of slowing erosion? So that's one question, and I have no idea. Um, and then secondly, would the Coastal Commission allow us to rip out eelgrass in one place if we were growing it in another place?
Yes. So the first question, would it help to mitigate erosion? Um, I've heard evidence about that in other places, and I've heard it's kind of, um, not definitive, but they've found that it can have effects. I don't think that's going to be a consideration here, since most of the areas are already shoaling in, rather than eroding where we would put them. But, uh, you know, what we'd have to do, and then the other part of the question, can you repeat? I'm sorry.
Um, well, I was wondering, okay, but let's go back to the first part, where you're saying it probably wouldn't have a big impact on erosion. Like, the areas of erosion that I'm thinking about are the, you know, the Princeton shoreline, obviously, is eroding because people are putting in riprap and various, um, types of seawalling. But also, in addition to that, um, we've got the West Shoreline Trail Project, which is still, like, in the mix. And we know we're having a significant erosion problem there. I think mostly, I mean, a lot of it's from runoff, but there's also an impact zone there where it just happens that the wa, I mean, according to like what I've heard Bob describe, there is some erosion happening from the way that water is moving through the harbor. So I'm wondering if we put a bunch of eelgrass over there near where sort of the mouth of the wetland area, or, um, I guess I should call it, you know, the marsh, right? Would that have any beneficial impacts, or would we have to study that to find out?
I, in my opinion, um, I think there's some, first of all, there's some limitations that we need to look at where eelgrass could grow in the harbor. And there's certain limitations in that area that may limit eelgrass, such as circulation, maybe nutrients in the water. But I think you would definitely have to study it. They looked at that as an alternative for the West Trail Project. They do these, like, inside San Francisco Bay, they do native oyster and eelgrass living shorelines, and they determined that not to be a feasible option for the situation on the West Trail. And I don't know that it would be effective. I think the county is looking into some other options, like a kind of a buried dynamic revetment, similar to the, the living shoreline on the West Trail for the Princeton shoreline, which I think, you know, you're going to need some sort of structure there. So I don't think that the eelgrass alone would have much of an effect, but in addition to the other, you know, maybe a hard structure, some sort of living shoreline could help. However, I don't know that it would be a huge help.
Okay.
Brad, can you?
Commissioners, can, uh, John, I'm sorry, I just would like to ask the commissioners to hold their questions till the end of the presentation.
Well, actually, Nancy, Brad asked us to ask questions, so I was just...
Yes, and we'll all have, we'll all have time at the end. So just keep track of your questions, and everyone will be called on at the end of the presentation.
Why are we doing that? Because this is, the question's relevant to the slide. Doesn't make any sense.
I, I don't think we should stifle public comment or commissioner comment because we want to have a robust discussion and make sure that we understand the scientific information that's being presented. It is somewhat complex, and I'm asking questions that are relevant to this specific slide.
My perspective is that interruption of the presentation makes it difficult for me to stay on, on track. So I'd like the questions to be asked at the end. Thank you.
Well, this isn't all about you, Nancy.
Well, I would like to hear the presentation before we run out of time in this meeting.
This seems like an attempt to stifle discussion by the board, and that's disappointing, and that's all I'm going to say about it.
No one's trying to stifle anyone. We just want to hear the, I want to hear the presentation. I think it's very interesting. I think that your questions are very good.
Understanding it. So which slide is this, so I can remember which, how to address it?
Eelgrass avoidance assessment. You can make notes while we speak.
I can read the title, Nancy. I'd like to know which number slide it is.
That is slide 14.
Slide 14. Okay, thank you, Brad.
And I actually want to say that I think the commissioners that are cutting off communication should be ashamed of themselves.
No one's cutting off communication. We want to hear the, I want to hear the whole thing. I think your questions are really good.
You are cutting off.
No, I'm not. You're out of order.
Yes, you are.
Brad, would you like to continue?
Please.
Sorry, who silenced Shan Karali? Who silenced her? Because she got silenced. Who did that?
I don't know. It doesn't matter.
Nobody, nobody has the ability to silence anybody.
Well, she got cut off, and we couldn't hear what she was saying. So I'm just wondering who, who did that?
I don't think anyone did.
Okay, so we all have a right to speak here, and I want to hear what every commissioner has to say.
Sabrina, I indeed want to hear what every commissioner has to say. And as I said at the beginning of the meeting, we will all have our opportunities to speak and ask questions. I'm asking that Brad continue his presentation, and then we ask questions at the end.
Well, this is a sore topic because at the last meeting, you cut off communication when we were discussing very challenging, difficult situations that our fishermen are facing. And they didn't appreciate it, Nancy. They would like to have their issues discussed.
We're not on, there's no agenda item on that topic, and that's not the...
I am just bringing up the fact there was a problem at the last meeting. And it's important that we not stifle communication on the part of the board.
I agree, and it's also very, it's also important that no one, no one commissioner monopolizes the entire presentation.
I agree, and I, I will stop this meeting if we are not allowing Brad to continue his presentation till the end.
You are the one that is slowing down this presentation.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'll just proceed.
Thank you, Brad.
Just write, right, everybody, write your questions down, and we'll get to it. Oops, sorry. Okay, so eelgrass mitigation, why is it required? If we want to move forward with Surfers Beach projects, we need to do eelgrass mitigation, number one. Number two, and number one, uh, for the district to be able to maintain that anchorage area in the East Basin and do maintenance dredging, we're going to need to do eelgrass mitigation. And it's just something that is going to be required. But I'll speak to that second question real quickly, is, um, the agencies have a whole bunch of guidelines, criteria, regulations on how to do this eelgrass mitigation. It's very complicated, very involved, and, you know, it's already been a whole lot of in-depth conversations with them. So we have a certain protocol that needs to be followed. Uh, what, what does it involve? Uh, we need to develop a plan to transplant and establish eelgrass beds in more appropriate areas of the harbor. And we're looking in the West Basin, got some, some pretty good ideas already, but waiting on some more concrete information. It's going to involve actually taking, transplanting some of that eelgrass in the mitigation area. We may need to build up the sediment to the right, um, you know, depth, so that it's optimal for the eelgrass. And it will involve, because of all these agency regulations and stuff, you have to monitor that growth over three years at least, and, um, you know, all kinds of agency oversight. We would have to, which we've done already, uh, collect data on bathymetry. But we also need to analyze circulation. When I say "we," we've got a team of eelgrass biologists that are under contract to develop an eelgrass mitigation plan for the whole harbor. So they're going to look at things like bathymetry, water circulation, water quality, um, all kinds of different factors, and do some computer models and try and determine the best places for eelgrass to grow in the harbor. And then we'll work with the agencies and try and get that approved. So the first thing that we did in order to get the data for the eelgrass biologists is, the first thing we did was that eelgrass survey that you saw before. The second thing was to do right at the same time, harbor-wide bathymetry survey. And this is something that hasn't occurred since 2005, so it has other uses for the harbor. This was the first iteration, and as you can see, there's some missing areas, particularly areas that, uh, may be good habitat for eelgrass. So they had to, the surveyors had to go back and collect more data and integrate other data into there. And right now, we have almost full coverage, but we're still missing a gap here that's needed. So until they can get out there and do that, once the shelter in place thing ends, we can't really start moving forward with the modeling, and we're hoping to get that addressed real soon. Okay, getting to the project design and engineering, and like I said, I'm going to go through these rather quickly because this is something that I'd like the engineers to discuss in more detail and answer the questions, everything. But, um, just showing you some of the areas. So we're talking about either doing a section dredge, a clamshell dredge, and then pumping a slurry of sand and water along here, and then placing it in this sand placement area on the beach. Here's the, what the beach looks like. So everything in red is going to be the initial constructed beach. And then after things settle, it's designed, it's called an overbuilt berm, so it's designed to kind of settle down into a different profile over some time. So you can see the first, as soon as it's instructed, constructed, it will be in this red shape. And then the dotted line outside shows how that is going to kind of go and settle in a little bit.
Brad, could you, could you tell me what slide number this is, please?
Sand and engineering is slides, um, call it, I'm not exactly sure, but can you call it the sand placement area?
Okay.
Okay.
In the previous one?
Yep. Now, we decided, we looked at different scenarios of placing it on the beach, anything from, you know, concentrating it here like this, to spreading it out long and narrow over a much longer distance, to even putting this same profile down towards, you know, Marotta Road area. And that, based on the Army Corps' models, this is the best way to do it. It retains the longest on the beach, and then it moves its way downshore, stays in the system. So this just shows you the dredging, the initial kind of dredging plan of the red stripes are what will be removed. And these need to be revised, obviously, once we have our eelgrass information, but, uh, you know, they've got a good start. Uh, here's the placement profiles, and just to show you real quickly, this dotted line on the bottom is the existing seafloor. And this is the initial structure, goes out about 175 feet, a really big pile of sand that's held in place by this containment berm down here. So everything kind of gets trapped, rather than works its way out into the system, which will obviously happen over time, but it stretches out that time, that would happen. So costs. All right, trying to keep on track here. Okay. So current project costs, just to kind of give you the perspective of the overall project, um, and then I can talk about the additional costs, and then I can talk about the funding that we already have. So starting with the current project costs that have already been spent or yet to be spent, but in approved contracts, uh, about $30,000 for sediment sampling, $100,000 or so for ESA's engineering, um, you know, for the whole project. Project management, uh, that went to me for different aspects, permitting, you know, all the outreach and project management stuff, $87,000. And then for the eelgrass survey and mitigation plan, $21,000, and then another $13,800 for the harbor-wide bathymetry. So these last two items, we were in a situation last fall where we needed to move forward with getting these surveys done before the end of the growing season. And instead of waiting to go through the, you know, official RFP process, ESA and I talked it through with John, and we decided the best course of action for the project was for me to subcontract out the eelgrass surveys out of my existing contract, and then ESA to do the bathymetry, um, part of the contract. It was unexpected work, but in the interest of moving things forward, so we wouldn't have to wait. At the time, not knowing of this, obviously, COVID-19 situation, we decided to move forward with it under our own subprojects, which is one of the reasons I'm here requesting the additional. So as far as remaining soft costs, the proposal today is, uh, you know, the project management services, including the eelgrass mitigation coordination, everything. $64,000 eelgrass surveys, we're going to need a couple of eelgrass surveys, one before the project and one after the project. There will be a little bit more engineering costs during the bid and construction. Additional, some, you know, a couple of bathymetry and beach profile surveys, and then there's a few other surveys. Not a huge cost. We actually applied for a grant, which I'll talk to you about, that would cover this. And the reason I say that... And the reason I say that, not that we're, we find out in April, but it kind of helped me calculate what those costs are. And for all of these bullets, it was somewhere in the neighborhood of $200,000 for the rest of all the studies and, and surveys and stuff that are necessary. So the remaining hard costs, this is a big one. Project construction, obviously. So our initial estimates several years ago, back in 2015, were less than a million dollars to get the project completed with monitoring. And most recently, we got estimates from the engineers and construction experts. The ESA, they're saying 2.4 million because of the high demand of dredges. And, you know, that was with a hot economy, but that was 2.4 million. And then to be determined, there's gonna be biological and physical monitoring costs on the magnitude of probably a few hundred thousand. And then other unknown cost is gonna be the eelgrass mitigation. And we'll find out more about that once we have the plan completed and whether it's something we can move forward with. We think that there's ways that we can use community involvement and kind of cut some costs and do it in a cost-effective manner, the eelgrass mitigation. So, you know, stay tuned on that. As far as funding for the project, we did secure a grant with Division of Boating and Waterways for $800,000. And I checked in on that at the request of John and Jim because obviously there's concerns that with the current situation and budgeting, if, there could be a potential that, you know, that might be at risk. But the fund, the answer I got back from Division of Boating and Waterways was that the funds are encumbered through a joint agreement. It was part of the, the budget. And, you know, it's, it's there for us regardless of this current situation. The one consideration is that our current agreement expires in early 2021. So we're gonna have to request an amendment that stretches that out so we can do that project ideally in the summer of 2021. Potential future funding sources, that grant that I applied for, I think we have a, I'm hoping, I think we have a pretty strong application in for the, it was $181,000, the remaining planning costs. We submitted that in February. We got a really good letter of support from Supervisor Horsey and another really good letter from Maria Brown from the Greater Fairlawn Sanctuary. We'll find out in April sometime, that's all I know, is whether or not we get that. I'm continuing to look at grant funding. There's some potential opportunities coming up with Ocean Protection Council. I'm not sure what's gonna happen in the current environment, but we're tracking that.
Our grant consultant, California Consulting, helped with these grant applications as well and are continuing to help Brad with, with looking for funding sources.
That's right.
John, you sound like Darth Vader.
Problem with the mic there.
Okay, so the other thing, we are getting back to available funds. So there's that $800,000 grant. And then in the district's budget, I believe there is $800,000 that's available that obviously the Harbor District Board of Harbor Commissioners would have to, to vote on to approve it. But that would leave us with a gap of $800,000 to do the construction part of the project. And that's where we're looking for additional grant funding, but also seeking some financial contributions. But John and I met with Caltrans and we approached them about that. I'm preparing some information from the Army Corps modeling to show them, you know, how long that we anticipate the sand will stay for. They need to see that it's gonna have some sort of protection. But that's a somewhat promising source, I think. And that would help them meet some of their permitting obligations through the Coastal Commission permit, where they built their last stretch of riprap a few years ago. They're required to come up with long-term solution. So, next steps, real quickly. The big thing now is the eelgrass mitigation plan. We're just waiting for that final gap in the bathymetry. And then they're ready and roaring, they wanna get going with it. And they're ready to get it done quickly. So we also need to see additional funding, like I said. Finish the CEQA process, initial study and mitigated negative declaration is the document that's in process right now. The permit applications have been, you know, they're drafted already and we need to submit those once we get the final information. And then obviously the engineering plans, we need to modify those based on the eelgrass planning. So we're waiting on that eelgrass mitigation plan before we get ESA back involved in that. And then there's details like the pedestrian traffic control stuff, the bid documents, and continuing with public outreach and education. And there's another thing which I wanna talk about in the next presentation, if we do a next presentation, which is there's some exciting stuff that we tried to apply for some funding for in that grant, working with somebody named George Donnerat, has been helping me come up with some public involvement ideas, getting some of the local schools involved. So there's, there's some pretty exciting stuff in the works with that. And with that, you know, there's a lot of subbullets under these next steps, but we still got quite a bit of things that need to happen before we can actually move forward, with the biggest one being this eelgrass mitigation stuff. And with that, I think we can open it up for questions.
Thank you, Brad. Commissioner Brennan, you have questions?
I do. Let's see, where to start? I have a few notes here. We'll probably need to back up some slides, but I'll let you decide what you want to do with that, Brad.
Okay.
Gosh, one thing I love about your presentations is how detailed they are and that you give a lot of explanation. And because this stuff is pretty technical, it really requires that. And actually, there's no way to really get into a full discussion of it at a board meeting. So maybe you and I can talk offline later because there's a lot of questions that I have that I'm not gonna, that I'm not gonna bother asking tonight because it would just take too long. But at this point, I don't, I don't really feel like I have a very good understanding of the project. It sounds like things have gone off the rails with the eelgrass. And that's not anybody's fault, you know? It's just one of those things that happens and can occur in nature. And then we have to react to it. So some of the things I'd like to know are, how many years is it gonna take to study the eelgrass so that we are able to come up with a reasonable plan that we can get the permitting agencies to approve? That might not be a question you can answer right now. But, you know, the, this project has been going on for a long time. And it would also be good to get an update on where we're at with costs today, how much we've spent versus how much we anticipate we're gonna need to spend going forward, especially in light of some of the financial challenges that we might be facing due to COVID. So those are things that I think we ought to try to get a handle on. And while I've always supported this project, I've always voted in favor of this project. And, you know, I still support the project. I think we need to kind of reevaluate at this point, especially since the eelgrass is becoming an issue. And I know eelgrass can shut down projects. So that's why I'm really concerned about it. So I think if we could get some more detailed information about that, maybe that's something that you could email. And I'd like to learn more about the collaboration with the Army Corps of Engineers and the other agencies and what kind of feedback you're getting on, you know, kind of the current information that we have. And learn more about this additional study that you're suggesting needs to happen. Where we do, maybe you could go back to the slide where you showed that we had only done like partial coverage of the harbor, but we need to do more expansive, full coverage?
Yeah, we actually did that. Those studies have been done so that the bathymetry survey.
Where do you show the?
Hold on, okay.
You know what I mean.
I think so, yeah. So this is the bathymetry survey. That's something that's already happened.
So what about the areas where there's no rainbow color?
Where there's no rainbow color, all but this small area where my mouse is. Not this whole part, but just like a small area right here has been covered now. So we have everything but this small area. And the problem is that they can't get there with a boat. So they have to get there with a, at a low tide and wait it or walk on the beach when it's super low tide and then get like a LiDAR, a couple of data points, which they can then interpolate into the rest of the data. And then we can move forward.
So the area, the area where the pier used to be, the old Romeo Pier, that's all been done now?
We have that all now, yeah.
Okay, that's good. Because I was concerned when I saw this and that area didn't appear to be covered, but it is.
Yeah.
Okay.
And it was, it was a challenge. It was a little disappointing that it wasn't collected at first, but, you know, there's really shallow areas. So I guess it was, I'm not sure why it didn't happen, but they did a good job of getting back out there and kind of collecting data and using other existing data and filling in those gaps.
And then what part of this new section that has to be studied? Like what part is that of the cost? What's that gonna cost us?
So the bathymetry cost is covered already under ESA. The, but that amount, which is the 12,000, something like that, 8,000 ESA paid for. And then they took that out of part of their scope of work, which would need to be replaced with some of the construction stuff. The way we looked at it, though, is that if we don't have an eelgrass plan in place, we're not gonna be able to move forward with the project at all. So we have money in our budget that would be useless anyway. So we took the risk of just trying to get this done. So the bathymetry survey's been completed as well as the eelgrass survey. The thing that still needs to be completed, we also have the funding coverage for undermined, would be the actual development of that mitigation plan, which can happen rather quickly over a period of a couple of months. But then there is vetting it through the agencies and whatnot. But they've been involved with this pretty closely throughout the whole process. And, you know, expect them to respond pretty quickly to it. They've been providing really good input. So I don't think it's a multi-year thing. I'm still hoping we can get this thing figured out. The big question is, what is, is it gonna cost? And, you know, how long is it gonna take to actually do that effort?
Well, I think it's really been helpful that you have worked so collaboratively with the other agencies so that no one is out of the loop and coming in with no information. So I, you know, I see that as incredibly valuable, that you've sort of shepherded everybody along, brought everybody along and kept the level of information high. And I'm hoping, I'm really hoping that that helps us move it forward as fast as we possibly can.
Yep, and from a permitting, thank you for that. But from a permitting's perspective, the agencies are really interested and supportive of the project, very responsive. So it's been a good experience. And I think they want to figure out a way to make it happen, given the eelgrass. We had some issues at first with the Division of, Department of Fish and Wildlife. We first found the eelgrass and they had all kinds of questions. We had to gather all kinds of information and respond to their initial inquiries. But I think we've gotten past a lot of those issues. And now we're moving forward and they're involved in this whole mitigation plan process as well. So I think that's good.
Brad, you might, you might, hold on this slide, you might go ahead.
Here's Darth Vader again.
Oh, my, my mic's not working.
No.
No.
Is it, is it still not working?
We can understand you, but it does sound pretty odd, but we can still understand you.
All right, I'll, I'll work on that now. Brad, Brad, you might just, on this slide, explain and show, show the board and the public where the mitigation, the placement area might be there inside the west breakwater. And then, and then also maybe make more clear that eelgrass mitigation is not really that unusual. And in fact, for us, it's only gonna be a one-to-one, basically, instead of like what others, other ones there are sometimes, one to four. And, and even then, you know, discuss a little bit about how it's gonna benefit us in the long run to go ahead and get this permitting done now. Because once we get the permitting done and in place for this area, if in fact more eelgrass grows, we don't have to get re-permitted, re-permitted to, or have to mitigate for that. We can just go ahead and dredge despite more, more eelgrass growing in this area because it's already been permitted for and deemed an acreage.
Yeah, thanks for bringing that up. That's something that I actually had wanted to get that point across and I didn't. So a couple of things. This is where the eelgrass was as of November. You can see it grows in two places in the harbor. The biologists were quite surprised that there was no eelgrass in any of this area. It could be that the lack of circulation is a problem. It could be nutrients in the water outcompeted by other, there's a lot of other brown and green algies and sea lettuce in abundance there, but no eelgrass. And they were surprised about that. So what we're looking at, first of all, to get to John's point, this is what it looks like right now. As this area continues to shoal in, you can guarantee that these green areas are gonna spread. Right now, we would have to mitigate for 1.2 to 1. So 100, whatever that is, 1.2 times whatever eelgrass is here, when we do the survey and begin the project, we have to transplant over here. Not immediately, but after the beds establish themselves over in this area. As an example of an area we could put it. So the approach, in order to avoid having that eelgrass, say we wait four years and then it becomes necessary to dredge in that area and you have twice as much eelgrass. Then to be able to get the permits to do the dredging, you have to do 1.2 times of that expand, that double amount and et cetera, et cetera. So the longer you wait, there's no guarantee that the beds are gonna continue to expand. But, you know, all indications show that as the bottom levels come up, it's gonna create more ideal habitat for eelgrass and it'll continue to spread. So the idea is, what you do is you get a permit from the Army Corps of Engineer, a long-term permit, five or 10 years, that says, we want to take this large dredging footprint of this whole area and be able to dredge there as needed. And we're gonna mitigate in advance of that for all the eelgrass that's here. So we don't have to worry about that when we dredge. And then every five years or 10 years before it expires, you get an extension for it so it can keep on going on and on and on. So that's the approach. The other benefit is that here you have a lot of active, human activity and people tearing up that eelgrass due to clamming and stuff. And actually, some of the agency people were pretty shocked to see those pictures. It's an acreage area, so you're gonna be damaged from that. It just makes a lot more sense to have it over here. One idea that we're looking at, which I think that, once they get, go through the whole modeling process, my prediction is that they're gonna say, this is the area over here where we want to create new eelgrass habitat. You could do that in a couple of ways. One idea is that the next time in the near future, when these boat launch ramps need to be dredged again, the outer part, because you remember the last time we just did an interim dredging to get everything off of the ramps. But when we get that silter material, say 5,000 cubic yards in a few years, you could put it over here and then raise up that level here and then plant the eelgrass in there so it will expand. So there's a lot of different ways of approaching it. But, you know, I think that's one of the things we're looking at. You could remove some of the sediment here and then plant more eelgrass here. There's a lot of different options. But, you know, the point is, the longer we wait to dredge here, the harder it's gonna be in the future to do that mitigation, which will be required. And that's why there is some sort of urgency. Obviously, there's all kinds of challenges and cost issues and unknowns at this point. But there is an incentive to do it sooner rather than later.
Okay, I just have two last comments, comments, questions. So the first thing I want to say is, I appreciate that you have had a technical advisory committee. And I just wanted to mention that because I think that's something that really is in the best interest of the district and benefits the public. And I think that the district would do well to have technical advisory groups on all projects of this nature and even smaller projects too. So I think that's been super helpful. But with regard to the eelgrass and its growth near the breakwater and your discussion about circulation being, you know, creating sort of ideal conditions for the eelgrass. ideal conditions for the eelgrass because of the nutrients and the water moving and so forth. I mean, obviously based on what we're seeing here, it does seem that the eelgrass prefers a lot of circulation because where it's growing is in the highest circulation areas, especially over towards Surfers Beach where you've got a lot of wave impact pushing through the breakwater. So I'm wondering, you know, are you suggesting that we are going to build, like we're going to fill the corner over by the gate? Or you're talking about moving sediment?
I think, uh, there may be some moving of sediment. I gave that as an example of another way of doing opportunistic, you know, kind of a win-win situation where in the future, you could potentially use the boat launch ramp material that wouldn't be good for beach placement and you could use that to expand eelgrass beds. Most likely, they would need to either cut a little bit of it, the depth closest to the shoreward side or add a little bit of sediment to the other side. Uh, they could do that in a number of ways. One thing that we're thinking about trying to propose, if there can be some kind of grant funding or something, is do a couple interim test plots in different areas of the harbor, um, of the west portion of the harbor, where you kind of build up some sandbags and see what would happen if you place a few. It would be a really low level of effort, but, uh, it's something that could help us determine where it might be the best place to grow. But to answer, short answer to the question is, there would be most likely, I think, some level of fill. Probably not a whole lot, but you need to bring it up a little bit. There's other, plenty of other areas that we had hoped. You know, the bathymetry is just right, the depth of the water is just right for eelgrass, but like you said, that there are low circulation areas or there's other things that they need to investigate as far as the, the mitigation study, um, you know, that may not be ideal. So ideally you'd be able to find the same depth area and then transplant directly into that. But it's likely that there may need to be some sort of, um, filling of some degree.
Okay, got it. Thanks so much, Brad. I appreciate the explanation.
We have some, uh, public comment. Kellex, do you have access to your microphone?
Yes.
I think you need. We almost heard you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, thanks. I'll, I'll be super brief because I understand there's a lot of presentations. A couple of things. One, Brad, if it is helpful to you, it may or may not be. Um, just this past year, the Resource Conservation District completed about a mile and a half of dredging in Pescadero Marsh that had a lot of sand, used suction dredging and other equipment, um, had special status species and title influence, et cetera. So if there's any way that we can help with sharing some of the lessons learned of that recently completed project, we'd be happy to do that.
Absolutely.
We, I actually just pinged you on LinkedIn while you were presenting, Brad, so, so we can follow up a little bit.
Actually have you on my list already of somebody who I need to get in touch with.
Okay, great.
I will be in touch for sure.
Super. Um, another thing that I was thinking about when you were talking with the funding is, um, how, um, this project might better be integrated with other regional resilience and restoration efforts to position it for maybe different types of funding. Um, so maybe that's another area where we could coordinate.
Yes.
Uh, is it frozen?
Yeah, I think that's a, a really good point. And we've been trying to coordinate with the county. They've got some efforts going on as well.
Yes. And we're supporting some of the county efforts too. So we can, um, I think also, um, have, we have our fingers in a lot of pots that we might be able to help with. Another thing, um, that, that we might be able to support has to do with, um, some of the engagement that you want to do. And some of the engagement that we're already doing in ways that we can find some economies there and also expand some of the, the reach of some of these other efforts integrated with this. I wanted to note that. And then the last thing that I wanted to ask is about the mitigation. Is that the entity requiring mitigation, is that only the Corps or was it the commission too? I didn't catch that.
So it's, I'd say the main, yeah, it's, it's Army Corps. It's from the state perspective, the main agency is Fish and Wildlife overseeing it. And National Marine Fisheries Service, I'd say from the federal side. There's a whole set of guidelines and stuff that they follow and they're taking it a lot more seriously now, um, even within the past few years.
I'm sorry, Brad?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. I, it froze. I, I apologize. What did you say? Who was the mitigating, uh, entity or the requiring?
The, the main agencies we're working with are, uh, from Federal National Marine Fisheries Service. And from the state is, um, Department of Fish and Wildlife, but also Coastal Commission. They have subject experts, so their biologist is closely involved in this. And then of course, um, regular Coastal Commission permitting staff are involved.
Those are all the permitting entities, but the entity that's specifically requiring the mitigation?
It would be, okay, so mitigation would be required by Army Corps of Engineers.
Is that for, is that under 404? Is that for your section 404?
Section 404, yeah.
Yeah. So then, um,
Actually, that one might be, would that be under section 10 because it's the
That's right.
Harbor, Harbor's Act.
Okay. And so then my follow-up question to that, and this is the last one, is, um, is it their preference or was it their requirement that it be onsite mitigation? The reason I ask that is because if, um, off-site mitigation had better resource protection values, um, is that something that they might consider?
They would definitely consider that. I think they would like to see, you know, within the harbor, definitely they have a preference. Um, I think they, the, the, the California Department of Fish and Wildlife, uh, folks, I think we're real excited to see that there was all this eelgrass in the harbor. Um, you know, it's a very important habitat for them.
Right. I am too. And then, oh, I lied, but there was one other question there, which was, um, is there, are there steps, the measures that you are able to take right now to prevent continuing establishment of the eelgrass? So that the, um, so that the mitigation doesn't exponentially grow?
Hmm, nothing legally, no. I mean, a joke about that. We could send out people and harvest it in the middle of the night, but it's, it's, there's not much we can do and it is an important habitat for a number of reasons. It's just in the wrong place. So, you know, we can hope that the conditions, they tend to fluctuate seasonally and annually over time.
Yes. Okay. Thank you. I don't want to dominate the conversation. Thanks very much.
Good, good questions. Thank you. I'll be in touch.
Thanks, Kellex. Good questions. Commissioner Lorenz, you have questions?
Yes, I do. Might as well just start with slide 14.
And I have to see which one of those.
I think that's what this was.
Okay, eelgrass mitigation.
Yeah.
This one.
You can go to the one you were just at, that, that would work too.
This one? Oh, I gave you the wrong slide number. That was the one you asked about.
Let's see. Can you go to the one that has the West Basin? There you go. So in the, um, in the West Basin area, do the, do you know, or do the biologists know that the density there versus over by the launch ramp area on the southeast side of the harbor? Because it seems to me that there is more on the southeast side than there is on the west side.
There's more on the southeast side. Yeah, they have it. I will forward you the report.
Okay, that'd be great.
And it has all kinds of good information. And we also have the raw data as well, so we can figure that out. I think there's definitely more in the east basin. Um, I believe the density is also more in the east basin.
The other question I had, uh, is that it seems like the, the West Basin area has a lot more water flow than, uh, South Basin area, just because it's, it's, it's more exposed to the west swells. And does that have an impact?
I think, so I looked at, I, it's been a, a while since I've looked at it, but, um, the RCD, I believe, was, did a circulation study within the harbor. And I think this is area of high circulation over here and this is as well. And then these areas were the stagnant ones.
Okay.
Uh, I can't remember exactly, but I can.
Okay, I can, I can search for that. I have the files.
Okay.
And then another question in the, on the West Basin side is, is that actively shoaling? Do you know?
On the west side, yes, it is from wave overwash coming through. It's not shoaling as fast, I believe, but it is.
Okay.
This one, we've got this area is all.
Can you explain for the public, um, Ed and Brad, what shoaling means?
Yeah. So shoaling, you have erosion and then the op, erosion is when the sediment gets taken away by waves and stuff. And then the opposite of that is when it accretes or shoals, it, it keeps adding up. And over time, it becomes shallower and shallower. So like the boat launch ramps, when they shoal, we need to dredge them, get rid of that sand. When Surfers Beach erodes, we need to add more sand to protect it.
Thank you.
So you also talked, so this is a, on a different, different slide. Uh, you don't need to go to the slide, but you did mention the idea of, of, um, just doing like a small pilot study, plant, it's kind of like, plant the eelgrass somewhere and see how it does.
Yeah.
But you guys thought, I know you talked about doing it here on the west side, but have you talked about maybe doing it in the areas over by, by, between Pillar Point Marsh, say, and, um, and then the northwest jetty?
Yeah, exactly.
Doing different spots because
Yep.
a lot of the work that's, that you're, you're doing here is going to be useful for other projects in the harbor later. And it might not be a bad idea to try to expand that information.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't know if anybody knows William Van Peters, but he's a, a local resident. He's a biologist, ecologist, and he's got lots of experience, uh, during his career for Army Corps and other agencies doing eelgrass mitigation. He's been kind of helping me as a volunteer with some of this stuff and he's got some great ideas. He's the one who brought that up. Uh, he thinks it can be done, you know, with very little funding.
Yeah, it's a great idea.
Permit and stuff, get permission to do it, but it's not a, a big level of effort. And then before this whole COVID-19 situation happened, I was trying to work on getting some small level of project funding for that from OPC. Uh, so I may continue on that. We'll see what happens.
Just, so Pete, that's Ocean Protection Council?
I'm sorry, yeah, Ocean Protection Council.
Yeah. Okay, let me check my notes because I'm, I'm going to bounce all over. Sorry. On the, um, Surfers Beach project side, the ocean side, that berm, how far out is that berm?
So let's see, I believe the initial placement area is like a hundred and twenty-five. Look at there. Oops. Just a second.
This is why it would've been easier to ask questions when you had the slide up.
Okay, so that's a dredge.
Yeah.
Okay. So if you look at this, 175 feet out, the initial placement, and then after it settles, we're talking 225 feet of the constructed beach.
And, um, under sea, is that, is that a cross-section of?
So, yeah, that would be the containment berm. So they get out there doing a really low and build up that berm out of sand. And they would start from the northern end where there's more, or from the southern end and then work their way towards the, the outer breakwater.
And the height is going to be, do you have any idea on that?
How high it is?
Yeah.
Um, I had the same question and can't remember what the answer was. But it's fairly significant, four feet or something like that. Three or four feet high. I think more than that. So let me get back to you on that.
Okay. And the reason I'm asking is because I know that the surf community would be very interested in how did this placement of sand like this and these berms are going to impact waves might actually help.
Yeah. Anecdotally, from what I've heard is that, um, you know, it's probably going to have a beneficial effect. There might be some short-term impact to the waves. And we have a whole lot of ideas for doing surfing monitoring and stuff. Uh, once the project happens to
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that so people knew we were considering that.
Yeah.
Um, and then I alluded to it earlier, when, when you talk to the, to the county, since, since a lot of the work that we're doing, just to understand what's happening in the harbor with respect to circulation, erosion, depths, eelgrass and the rest of the biology, that's going to be really useful for, for other projects the county's considering. And so I'm hopeful that at some point we can have a, a public meeting, maybe the district can facilitate that to, um, bring all the stakeholders together, including the public, to talk about how all of this is going to impact planning in the, in the future for like the Princeton Shoreline.
Yeah. And actually that's part of the proposed, uh, sorry, proposed step forward, uh, next steps as part of my, you know, proposal is there's going to be, um, at least one workshop, probably at the Half Moon Bay Yacht Club or something like that, larger public workshop, and then a number of other, you know, at least one more technical advisory group meeting.
Okay, I won't take up any more of your time. I have a lot of questions, but I can, I can talk with you offline.
Yep, I'm around anytime. Give me.
Thanks.
Nancy?
Thank you. Yes, Commissioner Chen Crowley.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve the proposal from, um, Brad on an amount not to exceed $64,500 and increase the capital expenditure appropriations of this, by the same amount to complete the project manager, management and long-term permitting process associated with the Surfers Beach Restoration Pilot Project.
Do we have a second?
Well, second.
I have one question. We've got sand at the airport. Uh, we've got 25,000 cubic yards. How much sand is at the airport? How soon can we get rid of that and stop paying that $4,500 a month?
Yeah.
Get that sand dumped and continue with the other project.
Yeah. So the initial plan was to use that for Surfers Beach before it got delayed. Uh, the new plan, which we're moving forward with, is that's going to be used for the West Trail Living Shoreline project. So we've done, gone back and tested it again and confirmed that it's, it's, uh, the right kind of material for that project. And right now I'm working on trying to get permits to place it, uh, as a stockpile in the fall before the project, late summer or fall, um, prior to the construction of the West Trail. So, uh, you know, trying to get it out of there as soon as possible. Nobody's happy about the fact that we're paying rent for that. It was a whole, the whole process was a headache, uh, doing everything we can. But there is a designated use for it and that project is moving full steam ahead. So as soon as we can, it's going to be out of there. Um, but I think it will be there through the summer probably.
Commissioner Matush, do you have any other questions or comments?
Uh, no, I was just trying to take myself off mute to thank him for that comment, as distressing as it was to hear.
Uh, so let's see, we've gone through one round of Commissioner comments and questions before we have the roll call. Do any commissioners have any other questions or comments? No, then Melanie will have a roll call, please.
Mr. Matush?
Hi.
Mr. Ryer?
Hi.
Commissioner Lorenz?
Hi.
Commissioner Chen Crowley?
Hi.
Commissioner Brennan?
Hi.
And it's eight o'clock, eight o'clock, and I think we should think about our healthcare workers for just a second.
So I also wanted to thank John for your efforts in keeping this project moving forward. And I'm not sure how to get, how to stop viewing Brad's screen.
Let me, let me get out of it. I think I have to do that.
Thank you, Brad. Thanks for your presentation and your time tonight.
And thank you, guys. I know that was not an easy decision to make. I really appreciate it. And hopefully this grant is going to come through, uh, for the rest of the planning. But thank you for bearing with me and sorry to take up so much time out of the agenda.
That's a good presentation. Thank you.
I'm going to go unmute now and listen to the rest.
Thank you, Brad.
Our, our next item is also, um, going to be presented by John Moran. It's the Big Wave Risk Assessment Group 2020 Half Moon Bay Training Summit. John?
Staff recommends the board consider the attached proposal, Big Wave Risk Assessment Group, and if the board chooses to do so, direct the general manager to enter into a professional services agreement with BRAG for a sponsorship fee of $20,000 for a professional two-day water safety and emergency first aid training summit. The San Mateo County is, is home to one of the largest big waves in the world, Mavericks. The district has an active permit for use of district property to support an annual one-day Mavericks Big Wave Surf Event. Even when the formal surfing event does not take place, surfers come from around the world to enjoy local surf conditions year-round. Surfing is inherently a sometimes dangerous sport, and the district recognizes the need for the public to be well-educated in water safety and emergency first aid. The Big Wave Risk Assessment Group exists to educate and train surfers, first responders, emergency service personnel, and advanced ocean goers in ocean risk management, safety protocols, equipment, technology, and skills training. BRAG's educational program is open to participants of all experience levels. BRAG's mission is to share centuries' worth of accumulated knowledge to advance awareness, best practices, and technological advancement to promote ocean safety and save lives. BRAG conducts water safety training summits at many locations worldwide. The board approved hosting and funding the 2019 Half Moon Bay BRAG Training Summit, which consisted of three training days. Last year, the district paid $8,000 for a one-day, for sponsoring a one-day agency training, and provided a total of $35,634 to support the two-day training summit and related expenses. So a total expenditure of $43,634 from last year's combined two events, the two-day event and the, the one-day agency training. BRAG is requesting the district consider hosting only the two-day training summit event again in 2020. Last year's BRAG Safety Summit at Half Moon Bay was a massive success. The Safety Summit sold out its 60 slots, well in advance of the summit dates. The overwhelming demand by the community for BRAG's ocean safety training strongly indicated that this critical ocean safety training was long overdue. The BRAG Training Summit served as a collaborative forum where professional surfers, government officials, and other community stakeholders, including district staff, work side by side to create standardized protocols for executing ocean rescues and implementing safety measures across government agencies and the recreational surf community. Since last year's summit, BRAG has received numerous requests to bring its Safety Summit back to Half Moon Bay in 2020. This year's, this year, BRAG would like the district to consider sponsoring the two-day Public Water Safety Summit for an amount of $20,000, so that the event can again be offered to the Half Moon Bay community. The BRAG Safety Summit is a two-day course in high-risk surf management with both classroom and water training. These summits are designed and instructed by some of the most elite and experienced professionals in the world. The summits train surfers and ocean goers of all backgrounds in critical ocean safety knowledge and skills. Summits are open to the general public as well as government officials. The registration fee to attend the BRAG Summit is $500 plus service fees. BRAG offers a limited number of discounted and comp spots to summit sponsors, alumni, and nonprofits. The district will have, if the district chooses to sponsor for the $20,000, the district will have six registration slots for scholarship awardees at no additional cost. The summit would tentatively be scheduled for October 24th, 25th, 2020. Staff could not identify any other vendors that have like syllabus for water safety training. Should the board approve moving forward with this Water Safety and Emergency First Aid Training Summit, the district would be responsible for paying BRAG $20,000, providing six rescue watercraft. The district may have three available at the time, it does look like it, and would need to borrow or rent an additional three rescue watercraft, which are basically jet skis. And we would also be responsible for providing a rental vehicle for six days. District Harbor Patrol staff would assist and participate in the training as well. It is unclear how the COVID-19 pandemic will affect this training schedule for late October. We've got Zach Delaney from, a representative from BRAG on our meeting, I believe, and he can answer any questions that the board may have as well. Zach, are you on there?
Yes, aloha, everyone, thank you so much, John, for the, the informative introduction, and aloha to the commissioners.
The commissioners have any questions for Brad?
Yes, I have questions.
Me too, I was on mute, sorry.
Me too.
Commissioner Brennan, go ahead.
Um, could you tell us, excuse me, so what, one, one comment I'd like to make before I ask you this question is that, given the popularity and the value of what you folks did for us, I'm really disappointed that this board pushed back and reduced the amount of money we were willing to pay. So my question is this, usually you get what you pay for, and I know you guys will do a great job with what we're offering you, but what are we going to miss?
Uh, thanks for your question. I think my understanding is, and just to kind of step back for a second, and I think maybe John can also attest to this. Our, our position, BRAG and my role is, I am the general manager of the Big Wave Risk Assessment Group. Our position has always been to work collaboratively with, in, in this instance, with the commission and its staff, so that way, we can have the lowest financial impact on the commission while also delivering the highest amount of, of value. Now, last year, the commission was incredibly generous in supporting the, all the expenses of the summit, which included both agency training and the two-day public-facing summit, which also incorporated government personnel and agency personnel. And by sponsoring the entire summit, the district alleviated the need to seek out other types of sponsorship, which is not always guaranteed, depending on which region you're in. BRAG had done some training in this area in years past, but this was really the first full-blown public two-day summit. So it was, I don't want to say it was unproving ground in terms of we weren't sure what the, but more or less, we weren't sure what the demand would be, and we quickly found out that we pretty much could have ran an entire second summit, because we had a waiting list almost up to 50 people at one point. Now, to be honest with you, the district, the, the summit is not going to lack anything. I think the burden is going to be shoring up the funds to cover the gap for the rest of the, of the, of the, the budget. Now, that's our responsibility, BRAG, in working with our partners, both existing and prospective, both in the area, nationally-based partners, to close that gap. I want to say fortunately, we've been very successful, if not roughly 100% successful, and at least having enough funds for our summits to run them and not be let the dogs out, um, and, and run the summits without a loss. So, nothing will change in terms of the quality of instruction, that remains the same. It's more of getting to the, getting to the start line, and the start line being the beginning of the two-day summit, and help in ensuring that it can be financially supported.
Yeah, and we're, we're thinking as well, Ed, that, you know, since the event was so successful last year, the opportunities for sponsorship from other agencies and entities, private businesses, et cetera, that, that, that Zach and his team work with, you know, there'll be more incentive since last year's event was so successful.
If I, if I may add something real quick, John and Commissioner, I, I'd like to point out just for the, just for the commission's edification, BRAG's been around since 2011, and the reason why this region, the Half Moon Bay region, is so important is because it is the, essentially, the unfortunate birthplace and deathplace of, of BRAG in the sense that we lost Cyon Malosky in a big wave surfing accident at Mavericks. He drowned, and many people who, some folks who are on this call, who may be tuning in, and certainly people in the community, have a very visceral memory of that experience, either because they were there, because they were friends with Cyon. Since then, BRAG has conducted, through its, you know, kind of a grassroots upbringing, three to five to six summits a year. We brought on a management group in, in 2019 to really scale BRAG and have it, have it be an international presence. And that was largely because of the charge from Uncle Brian Kialana, from, from whom most of this ocean safety knowledge was given and provided. He said, you know, whatever you do, I'll, I'll give you the knowledge, but we got to find a way to spread it. So we brought in the team, we went from doing three to five summits a year to nine really successful summits last year. Arguably, last year was the most successful year in BRAG's history in terms of the demand, the quality of the summits, the organizational. And then, starting in July, last year, July 2019, we began, our, myself and our, our operations team, began planning the 2020's schedule. By January 1, we were ready to, and we did announce a 16-summit schedule, which had summits in South America, Australia, all over the United States, and even one in Europe. Now, COVID-19 has thrown, which I'm sure this will come up in our conversations, a sort of huge question mark into what everyone's doing, what governments are doing, what businesses are doing, what, what, you know, organizations are doing. So we've had to, in being transparent, we've had to cancel our summits, which were initially going to be in March, we were supposed to be in South America right now for the Chile and Peru summit, and we're going to be canceling our Caserina Beach Summit. With that being said, we had, answering the question about the partnerships, because people have seen, Patagonia is one of our largest supporters for all of our summits and institutionally, but because organizations, companies, nonprofits, government agencies, what have you, have seen the trajectory and the organizational prowess of BRAG grow exponentially, we've been able to garner a lot more partnerships, and not just the one-off summit ones, but those are certainly important, but long systemic partnerships that would carry out either annually or multi-year. So we feel confident, now COVID aside, we feel confident that we can find people to work with us both locally and nationally, maybe internationally, to support this summit, because it is home to one of the large, one of the most important big wave breaks in the world. But again, COVID-19, we'll have to monitor the situation to see what the fallout's going to be, if and when things begin to go back to some normalcy.
Thank you.
Any other commissioner questions or comments?
Uh, yeah, I have some. So I noticed that there is a deck attached to the staff report, and it was my expectation, our hope, that, because some of us are not that familiar with the history of, of how BRAG was formed, and I know Zach just talked a little bit about it. I thought it might be helpful if Zach could take us through that, what is actually quite a short deck, and just kind of give us some backstory on, on why BRAG was formed, and a little more detail about the, some of the amazing trainers that are involved. Is that something you could do for us, Zach?
Certainly. I'm just pulling up the deck right now. So again, I'm not sure if this is in front of the other commissioners, but, um,
Can we do a screen sharing with the deck, is that possible, Lizzie?
Yes, of course, I'll just have to promote you to panelist, Zach, if you could just stand by for a moment?
I'll behave. Okay.
You should be able to share your screen.
All right, let me give me one second, because I'm actually, because of the headset I'm wearing, I'm using my phone for this Zoom, so I'm just doing everything through here, but that's not a problem, just give me 30 seconds. Okay, so, let me see, share content?
At the bottom of your screen, there should be a share screen button, probably green.
Okay. Says share, says share content, is that the same thing?
Not sure, we can try it.
Okay.
Or another way to do it would be just for, Lizzie, for you to share the screen, and then we could just, you could just say, switch slides or something.
Yeah, it's, it's very short, I mean, if, if that's not an inconvenience, that would be helpful, because for some reason, I'm not able to do the share screen feature. Um, maybe it's because I'm on the mobile.
Is that possible, Lizzie?
So I'm not sure I understand the question, I have you, I have you sharing video, but are you asking for me to share the slide deck?
Okay.
Yeah, we're asking for you to share the slide deck, and then he can just ask you to go to the next page.
Sure, it'll take me a second to navigate there, if you could just hold on, thanks.
It's, it's linked in the staff report at the bottom.
Okay, so it appears that I have it up, and then just bear with me as I share my screen here.
Thanks so much, Lizzie, appreciate it.
Of course.
Okay, so you can go to the, yep, so this is Cyon Malosky. He was the, sorry, he was the surfer that passed away at Mavericks in 2011. There was a couple people, a lot of people that we know who were there, one of them was Danilo Coto. Danilo was really good friends with Cyon, and after seeing all the things that went wrong in the response to trying to save Cyon's life, and that's a whole other, very, very interesting story, sad, but very interesting and revealing, he felt that there needed to be some type of universal protocol for people who are big wave surf, in the big wave surfing community. At that point, people are really pushing the limits, both with paddle, paddling, big wave surfing, but they didn't have necessarily the requisite skills, even just being trained in CPR, to save another, another's life or even their own. So really, BRAG was created in loving memory of Cyon Malosky. You can go to the next slide. So the, the name of the organization is a little bit of a misnomer, it's the Big Wave Risk Assessment Group,
So the, the name of the organization is a little bit of a misnomer. It's the Big Wave Assessment Group because that's where, that's what the, what its origins were, is learning about big wave safety. However, over the last almost 10 years now, next year will be BRAG's 10 year anniversary. We've recognized that this knowledge is applicable to anybody who is interested in or has a love for the ocean, has any ocean activity that they participate in. Size is relative. What may be a big wave to you at four foot may be a huge wave to somebody else. Or what may be a small wave to you may be a big wave to somebody else. And for, you know, somebody, a 20-foot wave may be small because they're used to riding 65 and 70-foot waves. So we're really happy that BRAG has been able to spread out into non-conventional big wave community or big wave community or communities outside of the big wave community, kayakers. People who just like walk in the beach. I mean, actually, the summit last year at Happy Bay was a great sampling of a variety of people who had such a varied background of surfing experience. Some people didn't even surf. Some people just showed up. This was an older couple, came and, and took the class because they wanted to be able to, if they're walking along the beach and something happened to somebody, they wanted to be an asset for their community. So. The idea is to be able to address every single person where they're at and their ability and get them to learn the process because the process can be templatized across skillset. Next slide, please. So again, this is some of the background information I went into, really focusing on helping people become risk technicians versus risk takers, properly preparing, being able to understand, identify hazards, how do you troubleshoot hazards, work around them? Be able to have a plan in place, whether you're going to a remote outer break or you're going somewhere that's, you know, a beach break. What is your plan if something happens? If you're in another country, what is your plan? What's the number for 911 in Portugal? What is the response time for somebody to come both on land and by water if somebody were to get injured in the, at a certain break? These are all things that people learn. Knowledge wise and in skillset wise, actually, we can go into it if you go to the next slide. There's a knowledge curriculum, which is a proprietary curriculum that BRAG has created, the Ocean Risk Management Curriculum, which comes from Uncle Brian and Pat Chong Kim's decades of working with Navy SEALs, Special Ops, the military. So a lot of this stuff comes from incident command training and it's been applied and tailored to surfing. So over the course of two days, people leave with their CPR certification, AED certification. They learn first aid and medical intervention. How do you, how do you apply a tourniquet? How do you make a tourniquet out of a surf leash? How do you use gauze? How do you, how do you treat a memorial wound that's bleeding in someone's thigh? Just doing enough until, doing, being able to do something until the authorities and the first responders are, are, are there. Again, emergency action planning. We did studies at the summit last year where we picked different breaks all in that whole community. Motion Beach, the Mavericks and other places. You had groups of people working together collaboratively alongside government agents. So now you're getting these conversations happening between citizens, government personnel, and they're building a relationship, they're sharing knowledge. They're, they're clearing up maybe misunderstandings, misperceptions about how, what the protocols are when there's a rescue that needs to be conducted. That was a very powerful point last year. Learning about safety surf, surf safety equipment, you know. What type of, Patagonia has created a PSI inflatable vest, so the one where you pour the ripcord in the cartridges in the vest, inflate the vest. You can't buy their vests unless you take a BRAG course. That's a, that's a requirement they had put on that product. They felt they want people to surf safely, but they wanted to create an additional fiduciary duty that people have to learn what they're doing when they're out there before they just rely on a piece of, on a piece of equipment. If you don't know how to survive out there without the equipment, then you probably, the equipment's not going to help you save your own life. Personal locator beacon, so going through the whole gamut of things that we, and this isn't just like, you know, pitching random. These are things that our team uses, that the best surfers in the world who are now part of our instructor group and our leadership use. We have a mindful breathing energy management that Greg Long has created. Now it's being bolstered even more by Mark Healy, who joined our instructor cadre last year. And that's just basically teaching people when you are in a chaotic situation. And this isn't something necessarily has to happen in the ocean. You can apply these skillsets into right now. I mean, this is risk assessment 101 with the COVID training. How do you practice mindful breathing? How do you lower your heart rate? How do you stay calm? How do you focus on getting to the surface? How do you conserve energy? And then, of course, we have, what people really love is the water training, so they're learning how do you rescue somebody using your own surfboard? How do you perform a sea spine extraction? Because we always tell our students, approach any, every single person who goes down who is, is injured or if they're unconscious, certainly, approach them as if they have a spinal injury. So you want people to be able, and it could be, you know, it could be a 12-year-old, it could be a 28-year-old professional big wave surfer. If they know how to perform the sea spine, they're going to do, they're going to help out a victim so much more than if they're just pulling all limbs out of the water to get them out of the water, maybe even exacerbating the injury. We can go through these real quick. The next four slides, five slides are just going through the leadership. Again, Uncle Brian Kailana, if you don't know who he is, he is the, the world's most prominent waterman. He has created ocean safety systems all around the world for governments, for communities that are used everywhere. He's the one that brought the jet ski into big wave surfing to, as a tool. Not as a thing to hot dog with, because he recognized during a session he had in Waimea where he saw somebody on a jet ski. He's like, wow, we could use that thing as a tool and it wasn't being used in that way. So he has pioneered, he is the ocean safety guru. And so all the knowledge comes from Uncle Brian. And then if you check the next box, Cole Christensen is one of the founders. So Cole and Danilo were, Cole's a Hawaii boy, lives on the North Shore. He's one of the, he's one of the best big wave surfers in the world, undoubtedly. And he was best friends with Sion. And so him and Danilo, if you go to the next slide. Or it was a slide before, sorry. Yeah, this is Danilo. And then Cole, the slide after Danilo. These two individuals are the ones who, who started BRAG. They were closest with Sion and they felt like when, when Sion died, there had been so many people that had died in big wave surfing up to that point. And everyone just looks around and says, well, that's the nature of the game. And they felt, no, there's got to be a way that we can do things better. And Cole, having a lot of experience in the mountains, he had some training with the American Institute of Avalanche Rescue Training, I think, education. And so he basically saw a program that was being implemented in another sport that would train people in avalanche protocols and basically having people become first responders themselves. So he saw, how, how can we, how can we? How can we apply that to the big wave surf community and surf, and surf at large? Oddly enough, Cole, Danilo, when he, when Sion had died, Danilo had won this double XL award shortly after Sion's death for a paddling ride at Jaws, the Peahia on Maui. And so it was a very bittersweet moment for Danilo. And this is where a lot of people really connect with the story. It's like, how do you, you're pushing the limits of the sport. How do you, how can you celebrate that when, you know, one of your best friends has just died, right? It's such, it was such a tough time at the moment, but Danilo had this roundtable conversation with the best watermen in the world. You can actually Google online. It's so interesting. It's like two and a half hours, the best waterman in the world. And really, they, that's, that conversation led, was, they were talking about what BRAG is now. This training program that goes around the world with the best instructors and teaches this life-saving curriculum. Pat Chong Tim was brought on by this, by, with Brian. He has a background with the Department of Land and Natural Resources here in Hawaii, a law enforcement background. He is the ocean risk mitigation technician. And then here, if you look on slide number 11, this is some of our instructor teams. So we have Pam Foster, who, for folks who attended last year's summit, I think, we think she is the best CPR trainer in the country and she's in high demand. She comes to all of our, our US-based summits. And we're trying to get her to go to more of our international-based summits. Andrea Mahler, who is a paramedic on Maui, teaches our medical intervention segment. She's a professional big wave surfer, holds the biggest, the women's record for the biggest paddle wave. It's a Guinness Book of Record. Greg Long is a professional big wave surfer, one of the top in the world. We also, Mark Healy is not featured here. John Hoover, Oceanside Harbor Police, Rescue Boat Captain. John is becoming a rising star in our instructor cadre and he would, he was one of the instructors along with Greg and Andrea and Pam. Last year, Ryan Hargrave, he does a lot of water safety with WSL, lifeguard background, ocean risk management background. Liam Wilmot, he was one of the people who are really close friends with Sion. And so he was involved in the, in the inception of BRAG and helps with our Australia summits. Slide 12, again, impact has just been so substantial. The number of services, surfers that we've reached is just, is, it's immense because once we go to these regions, we try to teach people within the regions so that way they can perpetuate the knowledge because we're not able to do routine trainings throughout the year at certain locations. It's usually one summit a year in, in these bigger locations. So the idea is to leave something in the community that they can perpetuate, which is what we did last year with Happy Bay, working with guys like Fred, Frank Kiarthy, who works a lot with the, the harbor patrol. So that way they can practice these techniques. Luca, who was the young gun, who was there for the entire training as well. We can go to the next slide. The, the next couple of slides are just a bunch of really great testimonials from other big wave surfers who, I mean, Eli Olson probably has the most recorded rescues or he's a part, he has, he's, he has the most rescues or the ones that he's involved with under his belt. And he always attributes it to his BRAG training. He's gone to our course multiple times. And in one year too. So he probably has about eight BRAG summits under his belt because it's like anything else. You gotta go and you gotta recertified and you gotta re-up on your knowledge, you gotta re-practice and, and sometimes things change, techniques change. And just keeping up to date with your craft is important. Kylie.
Zachary, I'm sorry to interrupt you here.
Sure.
Can you give me an idea how much longer the presentation's going on? One of our following presenters has let me know that she has a time constraint.
Yeah, I mean, my, my presentation was just, I don't, I don't have to go through this whole deck. This is available to the commissioners, so. If there's other questions, I know that the, you know, I was on the call for about an hour and a half waiting to present for you folks to, with the previous instructors, so. Yeah, I, I respect that. I have my own time constraints as well, so I can answer any other questions that you folks may have.
Thank you. I appreciate your time and your patience too. Is, will this training, okay, I'll get right to.
Oh yeah, sorry.
Chen Crowley. Zachary, will this training even be feasible in the fall and if it's not, would our funds be refunded?
I can't answer that because that's a government, as a government decision. Governor, I guess the government of California will dictate whether or not people are allowed to be in large gatherings, but certainly working with Jim and John, I have, I have pledged to them that we would approach this cautiously and we would ask that the commission approve funds, but not release anything until we have 100% confirmation that this is going to happen. And we can, we can determine, I can work with the, the staff as to what that date would be. But we certainly are interested in taking funds, knowing that this thing is not going to happen. And we certainly are not interested in putting on a summit if it runs, if it puts participants in any danger whatsoever. So we are, like I'm sure you folks are doing, we're just kind of playing the waiting game and just staying very vigilant, up to date with government updates and whatnot.
Thank you. Commissioner Chen Crowley, you had a comment or question?
Oh, I was just going to ask the same question because I'm, I'm reading right now, even like on the East Coast that, for example, I think it's Boston University, one of the universities out there isn't even going to start in the fall, which is, I mean, I don't know what they're saying, Zachary, but it's just kind of odd that they're thinking that far out. And I just, I'm not against it. I just don't know what the plan B is and I have the same concerns about you know, the start of this, how can this happen? And I mean, thank you, by the way, for spending time and doing the presentation. I think that what y'all are doing is great. I just want us to be prepared. I think we owe it to the community to be able to answer any kind of questions they have in terms of, you know, social distancing and things like that, since the times are so uncertain at, at this point right now. So that, that's, I mean, it's kind of piggybacking on what Nancy was just asking.
Yeah, so I mean, again, we would work, I, I can't give you a date by, right now, by when we would want to make that decision. But typically, we, we require internally three to four months to, at least for a new summit in a region that we've never been to, we require three to four months of planning. And so if it looks like there is a lot of still unknowns during that, that three to four month out period, then usually it's not going to, we're just, we'll wait until, you know, the following year. So I guess, you know, my intention would be to work with the staff, decide on a date. Okay, by this date, we're going to decide if this thing is going to happen. We're not going to expend any funds up to this date. And if we decide collectively based on the information we have, that best available information we have from governments, from the commission, our own determination that this is not going to work, then, you know, the funds, I guess, are never released, but at least they're available in the event the summit's going to happen. We're not really interested in like taking funds when we know this thing isn't going to happen. So I would be comfortable if it's the commission's will. I, I would appreciate maybe just approving tentatively, knowing that these funds are not going to be released until an agreed upon date and I can present later as far as some information that's going to be coming out the next couple of weeks. I mean, even now, we can't leave Hawaii until the end of the month, so. You know, I don't know if that is going to extend into the summer. I don't know if it's going to extend to the fall. I totally hear the concerns because a lot of, a lot of event, large events, concerts, whatever, large gatherings, business conferences being pushed to the fall. But there's even speculation, depending on what part of the country you're in, that they might be canceled. So. Like I said, it's, it, it's hard to determine right now, but we, we want to work collaboratively with, with the district staff and the commission. Because we want this to be a long-term relationship. We feel like every year there should be a summit in this community and every year it's going to be, people are going to come out and it's going to be, it's going to be packed. It's going to be sold out. And it's a great opportunity for the personnel to work closely with people who are surfing one of the most dangerous waves in the world, right in your backyard, so.
So can I ask another question? So Jim, does it matter if we vote on this now or even two months from now? When we have a better idea as to what the, the COVID-19 or sheltering in place climate is going to be? I mean, this could go on an agenda at any time, right?
Good evening, Commissioner. We're looking for recommending approval now with, with a COVID clause in the agreement that if it's unable to proceed due to COVID or related activities that, that one, either it's moved to the following year, 2021, or that the funds just aren't expanded. So we won't expand the funds at all until we know we'll be able to take it out. And by midsummer to the end of summer, we'll know a lot more before we expend any funds. And if you, if we approve it tonight, we can come back to the board in a couple of months. Once we decide it's going to move forward for sure and request for the funding again.
Through the chair, I have a comment and question.
Mr. Charles Arenas?
So I'm in complete support of this, Zach. And out of respect for BRAG, we should approve it now because we're going to impact their, their planning too. And it doesn't make any sense not to start the process now, especially since, as he said, they're not interested in just taking money from the district just for fun. They're, they will decide with staff and with the local authorities in the state if it's a safe time to do the, the program. I don't see any issues whatsoever with it.
And that was, that was the thinking, Ed, or Commissioner?
I agree with you.
Through the chair, I have a quick question for RGM.
Through the chair, I have a quick question for RGM.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
So I heard what your suggestion was, like a COVID clause. Or I also heard what Zach said about, you know, this being like a tentative agreement so that planning can get started, but not get overcommitted. So that if a cancellation needs to happen, that can occur. You know, I think everybody knows that I think that this safety training is really vital and extremely important for the safety of everyone who kayaks, surfs, stand-up paddleboard, foils, whatever, whatever kind of water sports you're into, sailing. It's just super important and useful and life-saving. But I'm not hearing an exact amended motion. And so I'd like to make a motion, but I want to make sure that, Jim, I include the language that you're recommending. And do you have anything that is prepared that you can share with us? Or I like it, the amendment, like if you were to rewrite your recommended motion, what it would include? I see your thinking.
I have too many mice on my desk.
Oh.
I need to find the right mouse to make it work. We would just, we would amend the permit. And the motion would be as written for a professional two-day water safety and emergency first aid training summit pending, subject to availability based on COVID or other shelter or other pandemic-related issues.
Okay, I'm reading that down. Subject to availability.
Of venue and social distancing requirements as dictated by the state and county.
Requirements. As dictated by state.
And county.
And county. Okay, got it. Okay, I'm gonna try it. So I, I move that we recommend. Oh, let's see, I'm just trying to amend this motion here, sorry. I move that we approve the Big Wave Risk Assessment Group Agreement. And if the board chooses to do so, this is, sorry, this is not a very well-written recommended motion here. Let me try to amend this.
Let me get, so, let me go back on that if I could.
Okay.
The motion would be authorize general manager enter into a professional service agreement with Big Wave Risk Assessment Group for sponsorship fee of $20,000 for a professional two-day water safety and emergency first aid training summit, subject and contingent upon state and county social distancing requirements.
So moved.
Second.
So we, let's see, we haven't gotten through all the commissioners for comment. Commissioner Matush, any questions or comments?
I'm gonna have to vote this down because this is a project that we don't need every year. We got it last year. And I think staff should be aware that Mavericks Water Patrol put on a similar course by Maverick Surf Company. And there was no charge to the harbor. And Maverick Surf Company is a ten of the harbor. Additionally, with the COVID burden that the harbor district has, which capital improvement projects, what do we forego to put something like this on? I cannot see moving ahead with this when we have so many other pressing demands and so much impact on our budget. This isn't something that we built in to have as an annual event. And I'm not gonna be able to support it.
I'd like to comment when it's my turn.
Commissioner Brennan?
So I'd just like to say that in no way is this training similar to any other training that's been provided at Pillar Point Harbor. It is completely unique and there is not a competitive training that has been offered or has been proposed. So I just wanna make sure that we're talking about accurate information.
And through the chair, may I comment?
Yes, Commissioner Lorenz.
Staff already said in their initial presentation of this that they searched for equivalent organizations to provide this and they found none. So there you have that. And since Commissioner asked the question of what will we drop, I suggest we drop the $500,000 that you're planning on spending in South San Francisco for a problem that the city of South San Francisco caused. That'll give us plenty of money.
Well, I have to say that the staff has heard once before, it's been brought up at previous staff meetings, that Mavericks Water Patrol did do a training. And I'd just like it recorded so that they remember in the future.
Actually, members of Mavericks Water Patrol attended the BRAG training in Half Moon Bay. And I think that they really appreciated and enjoyed it. So it's not, this isn't about one thing's better than another thing. It's, this is a very unique opportunity for anybody that's interested in emergency training on the water to further their skills. And that includes local people who may want to also teach training. There's no, it's not one or the other. It's about, let's get as many people trained as possible. And there's a huge need, there's a huge desire, there's a waiting list, people want to do this training. It only serves to take pressure off of the harbor patrol in emergency response situations and help create safer beaches and a safer experience in the ocean. So it's a real win-win opportunity for the public and also for emergency responders.
Any other comments or questions from commissioners?
I'd like to point out one more thing. Is that every year at our local beaches and also at Mavericks, especially at Mavericks, which is much more dangerous than most of our beaches, we see more and more people at the lineup. And we see younger people at the lineup and also inexperienced people. So the danger to the public there is not gonna go down, it's going up. And the service that BRAG gives the surfers is huge.
My suggestion is to just not fund it through the harbor district. If they can get COVID funding or some other funding, or find some supporters or some other groups to pay for this, fine. I'm saying the harbor district does not have disposable funds on hand to put this on. If B-RAG can find other people to sponsor this, excellent.
The funding is, has gone down significantly from last year in response to some of your concerns, Commissioner Matush. So I think a real genuine effort has been made all around to try to bring the cost to the district down. But I do believe that we bear some responsibility for making sure that the public has an opportunity to be safe in the water, especially considering the fact that Pillar Point Harbor is located in an extremely dangerous location. Yet, the harbor district is encouraging people to use the water. So as a public agency, one of the things we do is provide public service. And that includes safety. And this is a great opportunity for us to get people better trained. And that also takes pressure off of our harbor patrol. So everybody's working together. And I want to add that the last training included the harbor patrol. They were there for all two days of the training with the public, which they enjoyed immensely. The harbor patrol really had a great experience. And I think they felt very good about the fact that, you know, they were able to help out. They were able to work with the public, they were able to educate people. And they knew that going forward, there would be more people out on the water and on the beaches that would be able to help out if CPR was needed or any other type of emergency response situation. And I can say, you know, from personal experience and being a person on the beach who had to deal with a CPR situation completely unexpectedly, without having done CPR training in probably at least two decades, it's something that you definitely need to do on a fairly regular basis. And if you can do high-quality training, and if you can get trained by somebody who's absolutely the best in the world, and I'm thinking of Pam Foster right now, she is phenomenal, that is such a unique opportunity. I don't, I just can't even fathom how we would possibly pass that opportunity up. The cost benefit, it's just, the benefit outweighs the cost so enormously. You know, it just kind of breaks my heart that you would not want to contribute in this way. It's such a minor cost.
We serve the people of San Mateo County, and this is a huge service for them. For $20,000, it's outrageous to think we wouldn't do it.
I agree that we serve the people of San Mateo County, which is why I'm a little offended that you would bring up Oyster Point because that has nothing to do with this.
$500,000 to do with it.
We serve the people of San Mateo County, and they're included. And we're under obligation to serve them under an agreement.
Right now.
So I'm gonna call for the question.
I'm gonna. I'd like to make a comment before we do that. Because I really do appreciate, Jim, working with Zachary and Zachary, you guys collaborating and bringing the cost down on this significantly. And I keep wondering why the harbor district alone is bearing this cost for a program that benefits, I mean, people all along the coast. It's not just, what did we have, 60 attendees last year? These are not just people who are, you know, surfing on our beaches or present at our beaches, and there is a great benefit. And I'm wondering if there's a way that we can get San Mateo County involved or find some other funds for this to help us to raise some of this expense. We are all on board with the safety and providing opportunities for our staff to keep up to date with training and rescue opportunities. I'm just wondering if there's a way that we can collaborate with another agency or with county. I'd like to look into that.
Or like the sheriff's office.
By that same logic.
Perhaps the sheriff.
Yeah, because they have a water rescue team too, right? Jim, doesn't the sheriff have a water rescue operation?
There's other state agencies and county agencies that have water rescue, both on the shore or coast side and the bay side, yes.
Well, while we're at it, we should ask the folks to pay for our rescues in places like Poplar State Beach, Francis State Beach, Montero. Since those beaches are not in the harbor, it's the same thing.
You know, I think the county is unique in that we have a harbor district that's countywide. When we think about what we're providing as far as public service goes, there is nothing more fundamental than public safety and emergency response and training the public to be safer on the water. And so, you know, in a nutshell, like if there is not anything more fundamentally important than doing this training. And if the training can't happen because of COVID, then it gets maybe moved to another year. But to sit here and, you know, try to minimize it or to act as if $20,000 with the money that we spend on various projects is too much money to save someone's life. It's just, this is getting into some unfortunate politicking. And I think we need to come back to thinking about public safety. And right now, what our state is focused on and what our country is focused on and what the entire world is focused on is how do we create a safer society? And this is an amazing step towards creating a safer society. And there is not a better fit for a harbor district than this program. There is not a better fit. And I think the least we can do is support this program to continue at our district. And it has done, it has done very good work. It's saving lives, and that's what we should really stand for and be about. So I would ask all of you to search within your souls and dig deep and think about what it would be like if you lost a son or daughter in the ocean. And if you could have taken a step to prevent that life from being lost. And I think that is really at essence what we are talking about here. People die in the ocean. Let's do what we can to try to prevent those deaths from happening. I mean, it's 20,000 bucks, it's totally worth it. I can't say that enough, sorry.
So let's see, yeah, yes, Commissioner Chen Crowley.
So I do, Jim, to the general manager, I do think it might be a timing issue, at least for me. I totally get the training, I totally get the, no one is minimizing the safety. I mean, I think that's a complete misstatement of, you know, trying to protect, trying to make it sound like we don't care, that's completely false. Zachary, you need to understand that that is not the case at all. But I think for me, it's the timing. If there's any way that we can look at the situation in a couple of months and maybe put it back on the agenda, is that a possibility?
This has already come to us twice.
I've asked the general manager a question. Please stop interrupting me.
You don't need to know.
Is that possible to put this on a future agenda? You're not winning any friends and trying to, I'm trying to work something out and understand in my own way. So if you would like to support what I'm trying to ask for, at least support me to asking the question, which normal people would probably do, if you want to win friends and persuade people, you're not dissuading me, but you're not helping me. I'm asking a very legitimate question. To me, this is the timing. I get it, I have a son who's in the epicenter of COVID-19 in Austin, Texas. He can't even leave. There's so much uncertainty in this world, I'm just trying to understand the time. No one's against safety, let me get that buried. Zachary, please understand, everyone is for safety. What it feels like to me right now, given the situation, is that this is trying, this is being rammed down our throats again. I'm not saying we shouldn't do this. I agree with Nancy that the general manager has worked very hard to, you know, with you. And I totally appreciate that. I am just thinking of the timing right now, that's all. So this can be put on an agenda like in a month or two. I'm not saying we shouldn't do it, I actually like the terms much better. I just don't know with the fluidity of the situation where we're gonna be two months from now. And I don't want to commit the funds and say, oh, it's gonna be tied up when we might need these funds for something else. So why can't we put this on the agenda when we have a better understanding about the fluidity of the COVID-19 situation? And yeah, I get the safety issue, I get the risk. I have a son who's in the middle of this right now, he can't even come home. So please, don't tell me that I don't care, because I do care. And that's the reason I'm asking about the timing.
The question has been called for.
Thank you, Commissioner. The timing right now is.
We didn't vote on the calling for the question. We didn't vote on the calling for the question though. So the time is now nine o'clock. Do you need a motion to approve that this meeting ended at 10? Because we haven't even gotten through half the agenda. I'll make a motion to approve that this meeting ends at 10.
I'll second that. Roll call, Melanie.
Commissioner Ryer.
Yes.
Commissioner Chan Crowley.
Aye.
Commissioner Matusch.
Yes.
Commissioner Brennan. Commissioner Laranis.
Yes.
So Jim, if you would please answer my question, I'd appreciate it.
The question comes, for the timing aspect of it now, comes down to uh, big wave risk assessments ability to start advertising and getting the information out to fill the classes. If we put it off for a month or two, that starts to cut into their advertising time and their ability to get the word out to make sure the classes are full.
So are you saying that we can't put it out on the, on a future agenda? Put it on a future agenda then? Is that what?
My recommendation is that we don't put it onto the future agenda because of that timing issue for big wave risk assessment group to get the maximum advertisement out so they can fill their class. And again, well, with the COVID clause in there.
There is such a big demand for it that it would be okay. I mean, I thought there was a demand for all of this already. So what is it?
There is my, my understanding, there's a demand. Last year, there was a huge demand. But again, it's, it really comes down to that advertising and people scheduling out their October.
I, I think, I, I don't know. I think, I, I feel that we'd be okay to wait another month. I personally would really like to see some outreach to other agencies and to the county to see if we can get some additional funds to get some buy-in elsewhere. That's just my position. So let's see, we have, the question was called.
Yeah. So we have to make, yeah. So I called for the question. We have to vote on, if we're going to vote on this now.
Right. Uh, so Melanie, roll call.
Is it, we're, are we voting on calling the question or are we voting on my motion?
We have to call the question first.
Commissioner Laranis.
What are we voting on?
Uh, you're voting on a call for the question.
I made a motion and this would be to call the question so the motion can be voted on.
Yeah. Yeah. And I made the motion to call for the question.
Okay. Aye.
Uh, Commissioner Brennan.
Aye.
Commissioner Matusch.
Aye.
Mr. Chan Crowley.
Aye.
Mr. Ryer.
Aye. All right. So we have a motion and a second on the table. So roll call again. Melanie.
Restate.
I think.
Yes. Do you want to restate that motion for us?
It was direct the general manager to enter into professional services agreement with BWRAG for a sponsorship fee of $20,000 for a professional two-day water safety and emergency first aid training summit subject to and contingent to availability of venue and social distancing requirements of county and state. And I, we had a first, but I don't, did anybody do a second?
Yes.
Ed seconded it. Excuse me, Commissioner Laranis.
Oh, okay. Roll call. Commissioner Ryer.
I'm abstaining.
Oh, okay. Okay. I'll do roll call. I'm sorry. Uh, Commissioner Ryer.
I'm abstaining.
Uh, Commissioner Chan Crowley.
All abstain.
Commissioner Matusch.
No.
Commissioner Brennan.
Aye.
Commissioner Laranis.
Aye.
Okay. That motion does not carry. So we're going to be moving on to item number seven. Oh, before we do, we had a member of the public who was apparently having technical difficulty, who wanted to speak during the public portion, public comment portion.
Before we go there, could we just have counsel clarify just for the public how the abstentions work with the past, the, the past, uh, motion that you said failed? So the public understands how abstentions work. Could Tricia please explain that to everybody?
Sure. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. So you had three abstentions and you have to, um, they, they do not count as absences. Those people still count as members of the, as part of the, the quorum. So in order for the motion to pass, you would have needed three votes. You only had two votes and the three abstentions means there were not enough votes for the motion to pass.
So in other words, the abstention counts as a no.
Um, I don't know that it counts as a no. I don't want to put words in the voter's no, but, in the voter and the, and the commissioner's mouths, but you did not have enough votes for the motion to pass.
So it was a, um, a two-one vote?
I think there were two yeses and three abstentions.
No, there was two abstentions and there was one no.
Okay. Then it was. So that's right. You had a two, two yeses, one no and two abstentions and the vote, and the, and the measure does not pass.
And can you explain again per the section code, what happens with the abstentions? Because that wasn't clear.
The abstentions are not a yes or a no. You needed three votes. You needed three votes for the measure to pass. You only had two votes and one now.
That's correct. Can we get on to the next agenda?
Yes. Zachary, I see that your hand is up. Did you have a question or a comment? You're, you're muted. Your mic is off.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
I just wanted to thank the commission for the opportunity to present. I think this was probably the most important part that you hear more about the background of BRAG. I wanted to just clarify that we have worked collaboratively with the staff last year, very transparently about our budget, making sure that we stay within what we had said we would do. And I felt like there was a great working relationship. We have great relationships with a lot of the businesses in the community. So that way we were able to hold off expenses until closer to the actual summit date. And just for the record, there is, because I, obviously I have to research this. There's no other organization that does the training that BRAG does, certainly not within the Hafn Bay area. And we had most of the water patrol at our training last year. So I just wanted to make that clarification point. At least that, that, that caters to the broad public that we do. Maybe not the elite professional surfer, but the broad garden variety surfer to the big wave professional, to the government agency. There's nothing like that in the world right now. So, um, thank you so much for the opportunity. I hope that, um, COVID goes away soon and we can go back to normalcy and hopefully we can get up to Hafn Bay soon and, and do a training. So thanks so much, everyone.
Thank you, Zachary. Um, okay. So between these two items, I'm going to see if Todd Korth is still available and interested in making a comment.
Yes, I am available. And actually, I actually have, uh, a couple of other people from the public that would like to actually delegate their time to me.
Victoria DeGru, I delegate my time to Todd Korth.
Andrew Fay, I delegate my three minutes to Todd Korth.
So that gives me nine minutes. It's nine ten, so we can go to nine nineteen. Thank you very much for your time. So in the last several weeks, I've actually, uh, you can all hear me, I hope?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. So in the last several weeks, I've had several meetings. My wife and I, Dawn, have had several meetings with harbor management, including Chris Tiddy, your new general, or your new harbor master and, uh, Mr. Pruitt, your new general manager. And I actually will give the commission, commend them on two good hires because I actually feel, and I think a number of other people in the harbor feel, that they are some people that have good ears. They listen. They're open-minded. And they're trying, trying to do the good thing, the right thing. So they've been very, you know, receptive, very open at a moment's notice to meet with me and discuss this issue with the dock sales. So I presented my, and I'm going to call this my safer than Safeway game plan. And I'll repeat that. My safer than Safeway game plan to allow dock sales proceed so the fishermen and fisherwomen in the harbor that do direct to consumer sales can continue with their pace of, continue their business. Because at the present time, our businesses have been shut down, summarily shut down. The last call that we had, you know, I was on there and I had, had the meeting and I was hoping that there was going to be a discussion. But before I even was able to make my comments, I was summarily, I feel that we were summarily shut down with a no, no, no comment. I mean, no, 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 uh, decision. So my point on this call is I would like to assign, I would like to assign an action item to the commissioners. And I would like to hear as part of the public, what your game plan is to open dock sales here. Because we have an impending event, which is May 1st, when salmon opens. And it's going to be extremely important for the rest of the fishermen out there that are, that when salmon starts the supply chain, you have a lot of restaurants that are closed. And there's only so much of the supply that will be able to, uh, be absorbed into the grocery store chains. And whatever is sold off the dock to every fisherman who has their own database, their own black book of their customers, that just takes some of the supply chain out of the grocery stores. And so it's, it, it impacts the entire. And, and, and this concept of delivering to the door is really a faux solution. It is a non-solution. And, um, it, it's just, it's not, and it's not a safe solution when you actually start thinking about things like food safety. Now, I don't, I don't want to go on a big tangent. I'm not your typical fisherman. And I'm going to explain just a couple, 30 seconds. I used to be a director at some microsystems. I was director of Europe, Middle East, Africa. I have a lot of experience in building public-private partnerships with governments around the world. Rwanda, President Kagame, the prime minister of Armenia, Ambassador Hudson in Tunisia. I could go on and on and on. I've got a lot of experience with this stuff. I'm not your typical fisherman. When I spend two hours listening to eel grass and big waves, all these discussions on this stuff, what you're spending your time on and you have fishermen, people that are actually, you've got fishermen that are employing crew people. Some of those crew people actually pay child support payments. And some, and with no money coming in, you've got children out there expecting their rent to be paid and it can't be paid because the deck can't, can't make that payment. This is wrong. This is completely wrong. The safer than Safeway plan through the harbor, if you have, we, we have a plan for social distancing for every consumer that comes down there, hand sanitizing for when cat, every commerce transaction that happens. It's, it is so much safer than getting crammed down aisle five in Safeway. It's, 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 it is beyond me. So another thing, when we get back to the last conference call we had on this, which is a, a, another perspective of this whole thing, the, the comments that were made by the commissioners specifically, and I appreciate Commissioner Brennan, you're having crab tonight. That's fantastic. That's two out of the many, many, many thousands that need to be consumed. So we appreciate that. And at times, I certainly know specifically that you've been a proponent of fishermen. One of the things that you specifically made on the last conference call is that you heard from other fishermen in the harbor that they did not want the public walking down the dock. Your reference to quote-unquote, "those fishermen" was the Hafn Bay Fishermen's Association. Now, for those of you that are on the call that may not know the detail, some of those fishermen in that association are actually two of the owners of the three wholesale units on the dock, which are wholesalers. They have actually, over the years, and specifically targeted my business and other businesses, have been very adversarial to the dock sales, very adversarial to dock sales. So bad that I actually hadn't had to engage a consultation with somebody at the California Department of Justice Antitrust Division. Those, those people that own those two sites, which we go back to the history of this, uh, with the harbor, with Larry Furtado that owns Three Cap and Seafood. Many, many times, I actually got up and actually presented on behalf of Larry Furtado. I have this second hoist put up, which would benefit a number of the, the slip owners, the commercial fishermen down there, shot down lawsuit after lawsuit after lawsuit, anti-competitive behavior. Those two people, those two entities, I should say, on those sides of two of the three wholesalers, do not, are, they are very adversarial, adversarial to dock sales. They don't want dock sales. Some of the people in the commissioners, some of the commissioners are collaborating with them, having conversations. That's where your input's coming from. They don't want dock sales. It's adversarial, adversarial to us fishermen. It's not right. If you go back and do a little Googling on US Department of Justice versus the Del Norte Fishermen's Association, you will see what the US Department of Justice has deemed is acceptable and unacceptable for fishermen's associations, wholesalers versus the individual direct marketer fishermen, what's legal and what's not legal. Based upon the conversation, that last conference call with the feedback that we had from you commissioners, some of you, with the comments, you've talked about collaborating, your discussions with the fishermen's associations. Mind you, remember, they are wholesalers. They are adversarial. It is anti-competitive. It is corrupt. It is not legal. And my game, my, my request to you and the request from many other fishermen and the general public, which is very, very set up with this, we want your plan. What is your game plan of how to open dock sales to the rank and file fishermen in the harbor? The rank and file fishermen is not, I repeat, is not the Hafn Bay Fishermen's Association. They are anti-competitive. Those directs, some, not all, some of those directors own the wholesalers. I hope this does not escalate into anything further from this because I want to hear from you on the next call before the May 1st start date of salmon fishing, when all these other fishermen up and down need to sell their fish off the dock, the general public wants to buy it. The general public wants a safe way to buy a nice seafood, American, American-produced seafood product. They don't want to go and have to go and be forced into aisle five of the freezer line, single file, wait outside of Safeway where every transaction is conducted. We fishermen know how to do safe transactions. Every transaction of a sanitizing handling cap, every transaction is safe. Safeway is, may not be, they may be selling Chilean farmed salmon. They're not going to sell the California king salmon, which is a, a superior product. So my, my request to you, and I'm under my nine minutes delegated by the two associates here, I want to hear on the next meeting before May 1st, I want to hear your plan, commissioners. Because I'm a smart salesperson. I know that Chris, the harbor master, I know that Jim, the general manager, they're recommenders. They are not the decision makers. The commissioners, you folks, are the decision makers. I, as part of the general public, and there's a lot of other people, I want to hear your plan on how to open dock sales to the general public. Thank you very much for my time.
Thank you, Mr. Korth. And I have heard, um, regarding item number seven, which is the next item on the agenda. I've heard that, uh, RSCD had to leave the meeting, so we'll have to put that agenda item on a future agenda.
I have a point of information, clarifying question. The gentleman on the last call, member of the public, um, what was, I somehow did not catch his full name. What I'm, what was his full name?
His name was Todd Korth, K-O-R-T-H, I think.
Okay. And did he say what vessel he's with?
No.
Okay. I have his phone number because that shows up on the screen. And we might want to let the public know that their personal phone numbers are showing up? Just so they're aware of that? Are we doing that, Jim?
I think they see it as well.
Yeah. I thought that we were going to just show the last four digits or something like that.
We haven't notified them outright, but that is a great idea. We'll do that in the future.
Okay, just so they know their phone number is showing up. Um, that would be. That would be helpful.
Well, it would be better if the phone number didn't show up. Maybe there's a way to do that.
I agree.
We need something to identify them. It's helpful. Have a name.
Well, we could.
And a number.
Could be blocked.
Legally, legally, people making public comment are not required to share their name, and they're certainly not required to share their. Personal phone number.
Right.
We looked into it before and uh, there wasn't a capability, but maybe the system's been improved lately and we'll, we'll explore that.
Thank you.
So we're gonna move on to item number eight, Pillar Point Harbor RV Park Restroom and Green Space Design RFP. Mr. Moran. John?
Yeah, Commissioners, this is a motion pursuant to a publicly advertised request for proposal. Authorize the general manager to enter into an agreement with the preferred firm, Questa Engineering Corporation. For architectural design, engineering permitting and construction support. For the new Pillar Point Harbor RV Park Restroom and Green Space. For an amount not to exceed two hundred and twenty-five thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars with a ten percent contingency. In the event there is a need for change orders due to unforeseen challenges. And authorize the general manager to issue change orders up to that contingency amount. And approve an increase in capital expenditure appropriations for two hundred and forty-eight thousand, two hundred and fifteen, two hundred and fifteen dollars. To be funded by available working capital. In nineteen eighty-seven, the district received a use permit from the city of Half Moon Bay. For an unimproved parking area for recreational vehicles near the east outer breakwater west of Surfers Beach. Currently, K N Properties operates this RV park. Um, under the terms of its lease with the district, which was initially effective on October one, nineteen ninety-eight. With a term of twenty-five years and an option to an extent for an additional twenty-five years. So currently, the lease expires September thirtieth of twenty twenty-three. The district and K N Properties received a compliance order from the city of Half Moon Bay. Requiring the application for a CDP. Which was not originally obtained when the, um, when the property was developed. The district has worked in good faith with K N and the city of Half Moon Bay to resolve this issue. While the installation of a new restroom at the site is not a specific requirement of the CDP. The district, local community and the city of Half Moon Bay agree. That a new restroom, outdoor shower, and additional ADA parking at this site. Would benefit the public and be favorable in the CDA applica, or CDP application process. Pursuant to board direction at its December twentieth, twenty seventeen meeting and subsequent June nineteenth, twenty nineteen meeting. Half Moon Bay has worked with the district to identify potential grant opportunities to fund this project. And found an applicable priority conservation area grant, which was successfully applied for. Covering up to two hundred and ninety-eight thousand of the project costs. The district and Half Moon Bay had worked together to present site improvement alternatives to the public. And based on public input, had developed a preferred alternative. The Half Moon Bay Planning Commission reviewed the district's plans. And has made required changes in order to meet the conditions of approval, which the RFP addresses. Along with several other requirements, the new conditions of approval have strict progress timelines. In an effort to meet these timelines, the district publicly noticed a RFP. To obtain bids for qualified architectural design, engineering and construction support services. For the RV Park ADA Restroom Green Space Project. The RFP services include all aspects of project architectural, architecture, design, engineering, public outreach. And construction support, including an initial review and assessment of potential project design alternatives. At a conceptual level, supporting the permitting process by providing required figures and plans. Preparation of construction plans and supporting the bid process for selecting a contractor to carry out project construction. The robust public outreach will consist of workshops and updates at board meetings. Once a plan is finalized, vetted by permitting agencies. An invitation for bid will be publicly advertised to bring on the actual construction contractor. The board will then consider the low bid prior to awarding the construction contract. Three firms responded to the district's RFP. The district's evaluation committee thoroughly reviewed the responses and interviewed the firms. District staff and city of Half Moon Bay planning staff assisted in the selection process. All unanimously finding Questa Engineering Corporation best met the district's needs for this project. In accordance with the RFP, staff were able to negotiate with this highest ranking firm, Questa. Bringing the total proposal cost down to the two hundred and twenty-five thousand, six hundred and fifty figure. During good folk, during good faith negotiations, Questa also offered a second possible reduction to two hundred and nine thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars. If it is decided through our public outreach and design review, that a prefabricated building is found suitable. Staff understands that the COVID pandemic will affect capital improvement project monies. Projects will need to be prioritized. Staff believe that since this project will greatly benefit the public. Has already been approved for some grant funding assistance and will hasten compliance with the CDP requirement. That this project should move forward. Board should consider moving this project forward. Therefore, staff recommends the board approve aforementioned motion. Um, we do have Questa representative, president of Questa is here, Jeffrey Peters to answer any available. Uh, any questions the board may have. Jeffrey, are you online and can you start off by giving us a, a little quick um, introduction to your firm?
Yes, uh, thank you. Uh, can you all hear me?
Yes.
Okay, uh, yes. Questa Engineering is a small twenty-five person. Civil and environmental engineering firm. Uh, our main office is in Point, Richmond. Uh, we've been in business, I think, since nineteen eighty-two or so. I'm a principal and partner in the business. We're not a traditional civil engineering firm. In that we specialize in a number of areas really focused on uh, public access pathways and. Uh, restoration. For instance, we recently did a, a plan for public access at Montero State Beach. And we're working with the coastal conservancy and post for a trail planning. Um, study at Cloverdale Ranch in southern San Mateo County. Um, we're teamed with John Ware and a couple of other people, John Ware and associates. He's an architect and a, a civil and structural engineer. And he would do the, either the architecture for if it is a custom restroom building. Or, or a, the other uh, kind of off-the-shelf restroom that uh, John mentioned. Uh, and we've worked with John Ware over the, the years. Uh, you may know his uh, work for the restroom at Mount Um and Hum. Uh, at the state, I'm not pronouncing that tongue tire correctly. Uh, anyway, that was his design, if you've seen that restroom. And I'm happy to answer, answer any questions you might have on the scope of work or our background and. And uh, the, our fee estimate.
Yes. Through the chair?
Yes.
Commissioner Crowley? Oh, oh, um, you know, I'm, thanks for doing the report, John, and thanks for that update, Mr. Parks. I'd like to actually make a motion to um, move forward. Um, and authorize the general manager to enter into an agreement with Questa Engineering. You know, based off of the public RFP process for architectural design, engineering permitting. And construction support for the new Pillar Point Harbor RV Park Restroom and Green Space for an amount not to exceed. Two hundred and twenty-five thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars with a ten percent contingency. In the event that there is a need for change orders due to unforeseen challenges. And authorize GM to issue change orders up to the contingency amount. And approve an increase in capital expenditure appropriations of two hundred and forty-eight thousand, two hundred and fifteen dollars. To be funded by the available working capital.
Okay.
Quite a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Yeah, Todd just seconded.
Commissioner Mathew second. Do we have any discussion before going to roll call?
Yes, I have a comment.
Commissioner Lorenz?
Maybe some questions. So I looked at the available information in the board packet and we just have, have a couple of uh, spreadsheets. With numbers in it. I have no idea, and I, I don't imagine that most of the board members even know anything about the architectural firm. I thought we were going to get some examples so that we could make an informed decision on this. Not just a bunch of numbers in a spreadsheet, which were kinda difficult to see anyway. So is there a way we could have that kind of information sent to us? Because as everyone knows, this project is near and dear to my heart and I want it done well. And right now, I, I don't have any idea whether the. Architectural firm can do it the way, way the public would expect. Now, having said that, I'm sure you guys can give us good examples of your work and you're working with some of the. Like coastal conservancy and post. You're probably just fine, but I would like, I for one, would like to see the information before I vote on this.
Is that a question for me?
No, I think that's more, that's, that's a request to the board to, to get more information before we vote.
Okay, um, and I think Commissioner Brennan, did you have a question or comment?
I do, yeah. So I looked at the attachments to the board packet, which I mentioned to Jim yesterday are not legible. So it looks like two different price estimates. Um, Jim, I thought you were gonna update that so we could at least read it, but never mind, don't even bother answering it. Looked like that didn't happen. And then the other thing is there was no formal presentation with examples of your work. In the packet, and that could be because our staff didn't ask Questa for a presentation. But I expected that that was the whole purpose of having this come back to the board. Was that we were going to see some sort of a PowerPoint with. Examples of your work that were relevant to the type of project that we are looking at doing. And it's just not there. So I did take the time today to look at your website. I noticed that most of your projects were related to trails and it appears that you guys are. Mainly a landscape architecture company. I mean, I don't know how else to sum it up. That was my impression. Didn't see a lot of architectural projects on your website. Then during this meeting, you mentioned an architect, first time I've ever heard of him, and you said it's somebody named Ware. Is that ware-architects.com or where do we find his work or her work?
Do they wanna see the presentation?
Um, let's see, is that a question for me that I can answer?
Yeah, what's, what's, what's the architect's website so we can at least have a point of reference?
Uh, it's John Ware and Associates. He's in Oakland.
What's his web address so I can look at it?
I'm, I'm a colleague here is looking.
Oh, okay.
And we can send it, we have a, um, there was a PowerPoint presentation we did at the interview. And our, uh, which had representative projects of both Questa and we're actually an engineering and landscape architecture firm. And uh, we're not primarily a landscape architecture firm. Uh, where the, John Ware's firm is ware-architects.com.
Okay.
W A, W A R E, ware-architects.com.
Okay, thank you. I'm on that website. That was the website that I found, so you're confirming I'm on the right site. Um, so that's super helpful. Just, you know, what can I say? I think that um, in the future, this is more of a comment to staff than anything else. Um, it would really be helpful to get a full deck of information and. Be able to look at examples of projects from. The architects or landscape architects that were considering hiring. The other thing I would add to that is, as I've said many, many, many times before, related to the way we do our RFPs. I am not in favor of hiring anybody but an architect to do an architectural project. So I would have preferred, much preferred, that we put out an RFP that was specifically for an architect. And that the architect could have hired whatever subcontractors they wanted to, to do engineering or landscape architecture. The way that we have been conducting business is in reverse of that, and it is a bad process in my opinion. It is not standard. And it is, um, it's, it leads to problems with projects and it costs us extra money. And it makes projects difficult to manage. So just as a rule for me personally, it's nothing to do with the quality of these two firms. I think they're both excellent, I'm sure. I mean, I don't have a lot of information so far, but I assume everybody's, you know, doing great work. Um, but I just think this reversal of how we're hiring is, is counter to everything I've ever been taught. And I am definitely not comfortable with it. So I just wanna restate for the millionth time. That when we put out RFPs for architectural projects, they need to be for an architect. Not for a landscape designer, not for an engineer. We need to hire the architect and the architect needs to hire the subcontractors to do those other parts of the project. So that is, if we're, if we're doing a trail project that is primarily a trail project. Then by all means, hire a landscape architecture firm that has great trail experience. That makes perfect sense. But that is not what this project is. And the fact that a modular, modular.
Your two minutes are done. No, but your, your two minutes are up and you are repeating yourself.
Nancy, I am not quite finished yet, so if you don't mind, if you could just give me one more minute to finish. I would really, really appreciate.
Please don't wrap it up.
If you could just give me one more minute.
Appreciate if you would stop repeating yourself.
If you could please give me one more minute. If you could just give me one more minute, I would so appreciate that so I could wrap it up.
This is the last time that I would.
Could I have that courtesy from you? This is important to me.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna call a, for a break right now.
One more minute. If you could just give me one more minute, that would be so.
Right now.
Can I get one more minute? Can I have one more minute?
Are we on a break now, Nancy?
Can I get another minute?
We're gonna take a two-minute break.
Okay.
Melanie, has it been two minutes?
I'm muted. Yes, it's been two minutes.
All right, great. So, we're going to call the meeting back to order, and I'd like to call the question on this item.
I would like to finish my comment right now. I have one last thing that I would like to say. So, if you could do me the courtesy of letting me finish my comment, I would really appreciate it. That would be a very generous thing for you to do, President of the Board. So, let me just make it quick.
Commissioner Brennan, I'm going to say.
Oh, I'm sorry. Are you interrupting me again and not allowing me to speak and finish my comment? That's only going to take less than a minute.
I was going to say.
This is so incredibly rude and disruptive.
I was going to say, go ahead.
So incredibly rude.
I'm going to take another break for two minutes.
Okay, let's do it.
That's two minutes.
Thank you, Melanie. Before I was cut off, I was trying to say, Commissioner Brennan, please continue with your comment.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate it. Very generous. So, just to wrap it up, in addition to the concerns about our misdirection in our RFP process, and for whatever reason, the resistance to hire architects when architects are needed, there has also been a lack of public process and the ability for the public to weigh in on this project. As much as I support this project, I have championed this project. This has been my baby more than anybody else's. I've been fighting for this since I first got elected almost eight years ago. I can't support the way this has evolved, and I hope to God that this project turns out well. The mention of a modular building definitely concerns me. That is not at all what had been discussed up until this point, and I certainly hope that that is not what we wind up with. That was certainly not what the public was interested in. So, I hope that this project does not go off the rails and does not become some cheap, tacky structure that falls apart in our very challenging coastal climate. And I really hope this turns out to be a nice project, which is what the community wants, that we could all get behind. And I hope that we are not terribly disappointed. So, for the reasons I mentioned, I sadly cannot vote to support the way this process has evolved, but I do hope for the betterment of our community and for everybody that the project turns out well. Thank you.
Commissioner Mathush, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I'd just like to, prior to calling for the question, for the record, indicate that Commissioner Lorenz and myself attended a meeting with absolute full presentation from three groups. There was some unanimity around Quest. I think Commissioner Lorenz stated at a prior meeting that after talking to members of the public, he wasn't sure. But I just want to say that Commissioner Lorenz and myself saw Quest's entire presentation, all the projects that they put up on the board that day, and they showed the work that Ware and other things he had done locally. We're very supportive of the organization. I'm going to support moving forward with this.
Okay, thank you.
I'd also like to say that Commissioner Mathush has zero credibility.
There's a motion and a second on the table.
Yes, zero credibility.
Commissioner Brennan, run it out of order.
Zero credibility.
Melanie, can you please call the question?
Zero credibility because he is a pervert who sends pornographic images.
I'm going to end it. We're going to cut the order.
He is a pervert. He is a sexual predator, and he should not be serving on this board. And both Commissioner Chang Karoli and Commissioner Nancy Raring are coing his behavior, and they are supporting it. And I think it's disgusting and despicable. He is a pervert. He has sent pornographic images.
You know what, Commissioner, we're going to take Adam President.
And disgusting.
Commissioner Brennan is completely out of order, and she's completely lying, and she's making false accusations. I would like to call for the question. I'm calling for the question. Quit lying, Sabrina. You're lying.
Are you suggesting, are you suggesting that he did not send pornographic images?
Melanie, roll call, please, Sharon.
Thanks, Harry.
This is a roll call for the question.
You know he sent the photos. You've seen them.
Melanie, you're out of order.
They're x-rated, pornographic, hustler-style, spread eagle, corn, vulvas, vaginas, anuses. You've seen it. It's disgusting. You know it, but yet you are fucking up.
I'm called, I have called for the question. I've called for the question. So, can you do a roll call for calling for the question?
Shame on you.
Commissioner Raring.
And so should you, Nancy Raring. Shame on you.
Commissioner Chang Karoli. Aye. Commissioner Mathush.
Aye.
Commissioner Brennan.
No.
Commissioner Lorenz. Oh, you're muted.
I don't know where the president is either.
No.
I think this is just to call the question.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. So, I think the president is, I don't know, she may be on a break. I don't know. So,
Probably because she's serious.
I will, I, since I am the vice president, I don't know if Nancy's coming back or not. I think she probably is. She may, I don't know where she is. Since I'm the vice president, then does this mean, Tricia, that I get to, that I have to kind of take over a little bit for a little?
Yeah, it means you're an enabler. You're an enabler of a sexual predator.
You're out of order, Commissioner Brennan.
An enabler of a sexual predator.
I'm asking our General Counsel a question. Stop sabotaging the meeting.
You should be ashamed of yourself. Ashamed.
So, Tricia, does this mean that I get to, okay. So, there is a motion. There is a motion. There is a motion and a, there is a motion.
Sexual predator. That is who you are. That is what you stand for. Enabler of a sexual predator. That's right. That's you.
No, actually, you know what? We're not, this is not on the agenda, so I won't even go there, but we have documentation to prove it.
You won't go there that you're an enabler.
So, actually, right now, we have a motion. We have a motion and a second on the table. We have a motion and a second on the table. We have a motion and a second on the table, Nancy. So, I, I will call for the question again. Roll call, Melanie? I would like a roll call for the question.
A man who's a.
Commissioner Chang Karoli. Aye.
That is what you're doing.
Commissioner Mathush.
You're going to have to talk about it.
Commissioner Brennan. No, I don't need to talk to a liar, Sabrina.
You are enabling a sexual predator.
No, I'm not. Quit lying.
And I'm not going to just sit here and feel like it's not happening. You enabled a sexual predator.
I guess the answer is no, but we have three ayes on the move.
Enabling, enabling.
You have three ayes in the motion carries. There's a motion and a second on the table to approve this plan. So, we are now going to do a roll call.
Vaginas, vulvas. You don't care if you sent those photos. You enable.
Especially should I do the roll call? Yes. No, we're doing a roll call for the motion. There were three ayes. And unfortunately, Commissioner Brennan just can't control herself and not do the people's business.
You enable a sexual predator, Virginia Chang Karoli.
No, no, no. So, there's a motion on the table right now. There's a motion on the table right now. There's a motion and a second to approve this.
So, I think Tricia wants to call.
We have three votes.
Yes, we have three votes to call for the question.
The motion, the motion.
So, the motion, the motion to approve this agenda item is on the table where I made the motion and Tom Mathush seconded. So, we call for the question. It's now time to take the vote. It's now time to take the vote. Melanie?
Everybody.
Melanie?
Hey, everybody, help.
Mr. Chang Karoli.
Virginia Chang Karoli enables.
Commissioner Mathush.
Tom Mathush, who sends.
Commissioner Lorenz.
Images of vaginas, vulvas, and anuses.
Commissioner Brennan.
That is what happened. So, let's just review.
The motion carries.
Let's get you in on this. Also, enable a sexual predator.
You know what? We can adjourn right now, Nancy, because we need to do bills and claims still. So, I would like to make a motion to approve the bills and claims.
Second. Melanie will.
Question.
Melanie, roll call.
Commissioner Raring.
Aye.
Commissioner Chang Karoli. Aye. Commissioner Mathush.
Aye.
Commissioner Brennan. Commissioner Lorenz. You know what? Commissioner Raring through the chair, through the chair. I actually.
Enabler. You're an enabler, enabling a sexual predator.
So, we do, I would like to make a motion.
Harasses women and sends pornographic images.
I would like to make a motion to extend the.
Of vaginas, vulvas, and anuses.
So that we can approve.
On this board myself.
So that we can approve the HR committee situation.
He's a pervert sending.
And approve, I would like to make a motion.
Of nude women.
I would like to also, I would also like to approve.
That's right, spread eagle.
I would like to also approve the.
Should we review further?
I would like to.
That's right. You're an enabler.
Do we have a second on extending the duty? So, if we're going to, can we go to the Finance Committee, scope and duties, I would like to get.
Nancy, you're also an enabler.
People's, the people's business, instead of listening to an artist just right now.
You know better. You know better.
Item number nine, number 11, and number 13, because we have to move forward with the Finance Committee. We should actually do the work of the people.
And I'll second those and call the question. Melanie, Melanie, can you?
Is this for item number nine?
Was inappropriate.
This is for, can we do start or flow at the same time, or only one at a time?
No, I'll make a motion to approve the scope and duties of the Finance Committee meeting, or Finance Committee.
No one else matters.
Melanie, can you do a roll call?
Average middle-class person is picked on by Tom Mathush.
Commissioner Chang Karoli.
A sexual predator. You think it's okay for the middle class to have to deal with a sexual predator?
He's not present.
Commissioner Brennan.
It's not okay.
We have three ayes.
It is not okay.
Okay, so, the duty of the Finance Committee.
I've been sexually harassed by Commissioner Mathush.
Through the chair, Commissioner Brennan, President Raring, meeting of the HR Standing Committee, that, right now, if you would like, if you would, I guess, you get to populate the HR Standing Committee.
Yes, I'd like to populate it with you, Virginia, and myself.
Okay.
Okay. And so, I'll make a motion to approve that.
I'll second it. Melanie, can you call, roll call, please?
Ever, right now, like, right now.
Commissioner Chang Karoli.
Instead of hearing what I'm saying and showing just a lot of concern, showing any sort of decency, you're just ignoring me and pretending like.
Commissioner Raring.
Photographs of vulvas, vaginas, and anuses.
So, the motion carries.
You're pretending like that never actually happened.
Through the chair, if you, and I would like to go to the last item to approve the reserve policy.
Yes.
To adopt and propose reserve policy for the finance of the, of the Finance Committee for the Harbor District. So, I moved to adopt the proposed provisions to 4.4.3 of.
Honestly, I don't even know how you guys sleep at night.
Commission's reserve policy.
I'll second that motion. Roll call, Melanie.
Commissioner Raring.
Aye.
Commissioner Chang Karoli. Aye. Commissioner Mathush.
Aye.
Commissioner Brennan.
I have no words for this group.
Okay.
It's just to enable a sexual predator. That's what I see in Brennemay.
And.
And the sexual predator.
Discussion action on both consent items, number one and number two.
We just, we just did it for number one, and so you would.
You guys are really proud of yourselves.
I would like to extend the meeting to, for another five minutes to 10:05.
Really want to torture the self-hungry.
I'll second that. Okay. Roll call, Melanie.
Commissioner Chang Karoli. Aye. Commissioner Brennan. Commissioner Lorenz. Commissioner Mathush.
Aye.
Commissioner Raring.
Aye.
So, Nancy, you pulled off this item.
Yeah, I pulled off the agenda, I'm sorry, the regular meeting minutes, and I have, I can read my comment into the record right now, or I can send it to, I can send it to, Jim, can I just send this in to you? To be corrected, or do I need to read it?
Spread eagle women, disgusting, disgusting images.
President Raring, you send that in to me. We'll amend the minutes, and we'll bring it back at the next meeting.
That's great. Thank you very much.
It was okay because I love him, which, by the way.
President Raring, what comment? We need to let General Counsel talk.
That is so not acceptable.
General Counsel. Tricia, would you like to speak?
A sexist, a sexual predator, and you guys are both enabling him.
President, President Rearing, I apologize. I need to correct the record. Item number six.
Okay.
Meeting after meeting, and I'm supposed to just go along with it.
Item number six.
I'm supposed to just sit here and act like I'm normal.
An item number six. Typically, the government, government code requires three votes for the payment of money.
We can't have a conversation about it.
The government code provision does not apply to the.
And Tricia, you're, you're not much better. You're sitting there enabling someone.
Keep going, Tricia, please.
Therefore, the motion on item six.
What about all of you, you know, enabling?
By a vote of two to one.
You're gonna go along with this as a farce.
Thank you, Tricia. That's great. I'm gonna make a motion to adjourn.
Despicable board. Despicable.
Okay.
Roll call, Melanie.
I don't know how the public can have any.
Commissioner Rearing.
Aye.
Commissioner Chang Karolyi. I have one comment to make before we adjourn. I'm so sorry to the public for them having to adjourn.
You should be, because you're an enabler and it's disgusting.
Doesn't really care about doing the work of the people.
Virginia Chang Karolyi, you're a disgusting person. You do nothing but try to push me down, cut me off, not let me speak, not let me have an opportunity.
Unfortunately, we have someone who just doesn't care enough about the movement.
Of a man who sends pictures of vaginas, anuses, and.
So, I, if there's a. We do a roll. I have an eye for adjournments. Did Tom adjourn?
You are not a woman who supports women. I don't know what you are. You are not a woman who supports women.
Okay, so the, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you. And we don't need to listen to this lie, these lies.
Shame, shame on you. And shame on you, Tom. Shame.